I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Monday, November 6th, to order. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the inclusion of an addendum item pertaining to drought conditions, which is on H3.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that. Did we want to talk about this note from Dr. Toll today as well? Well, that's what I was wondering if we would want to address that as an addendum item as well today, also under new business. That would make it H4, additional Civil War trail markers on the courthouse grounds.
I'd be happy to do it today, or we can put it as its own agenda in the next month, whatever. You all want to do, we can discuss it today?
It's a grant item, so I'm not sure of the time constraints attached to the grant, and they may want an affirmative vote from us before they award the grant. That would be my only concern.
Then I'll amend my motion to include both the added item pertaining to drought conditions, and then this item, which is to request to place an additional Civil War Trail marker at the county courthouse.
And I'll continue to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll move into school report with Dr. Grimsley, our superintendent.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I almost said School Board. That's next week.
Definitely not.
It's a fun board, you should think. We have wrapped up our first quarter. Winter sports tryouts are beginning, and some exciting postseason prospects are on the horizon. Our football team qualified for postseason play for the second year in a row. They played their last game over the weekend and unfortunately didn't take home the victory, but it was a great season. Our girls volleyball team soared to a scintillating victory over Appomattox Regional on Thursday evening in the region semifinal game. The team will advance to the region championship this evening at 6:00 PM at Alta Vista, and they've already qualified for a berth in the state tournament this Saturday, win or lose, tonight. So that's great. The time and location will be determined. Congratulations also to our boys cross-country team for advancing to the state meet on November 11th in Salem. Congratulations to Emma Brown for individually advancing to state tournament from the girls' cross-country team. We could not be more proud of our scholar athletes. Last week, we celebrated our 2022 girls' basketball state champions in a very special ring ceremony, the first ceremony of its kind in the school's history. The student athletes were presented with a ring to celebrate their hard work, dedication, and triumphant season. Following the presentation, players and guests were treated to a beautiful reception. Last month, RCPS recognized Bullying Prevention Month. Morning announcements emphasized kindness, bullying awareness, social isolation, and supporting friends each day. Special books aligned with the bullying prevention theme were read in classes and displayed in libraries. Start With Hello Week was celebrated by giving students and staff hello name tags to start the conversation with different people. Unity Day was celebrated on the 18th, where all students and staff were encouraged to wear orange to promote acceptance, kindness, and inclusion. During the week of October 16th, RCPS celebrated National Bus Safety Week. Bus drivers received a tasty breakfast and some RCPS transportation swag to thank them for their service and commitment to safety. We are so thankful for our transportation team who ensure our students arrive safely to and from school every day. On October 19th, RCHS presented a wonderful fall concert under the direction of Ms. Kalia Page. The marching band competed in their final competition over the weekend in Powhatan, ending a very successful, award-winning season. And I wrote this before they actually placed, and I think it's the first time ever that the Panther Band has actually won first place in every single category in their class. So they brought home five trophies on Saturday, ending their season. It's a very glad moment. Dr. Band Mom is very happy about that. We are having a winter concert the evening of December 7th, but please look out for that time, and that should be announced soon. On October 31st, besides the Halloween festivities, RCHS kicked off this year's Positive Relationships Inspire a Drive for Excellence Pride Clubs. Some of this year's clubs include Agri-Touring, Sports, Anime, Bake and Take, Cosmo Club, Just Dance, Make a Difference, and Eat Some Chocolate. I like that one, that sounds pretty good. Minecraft, Pickleball, Strategic Gaming, Ultimate Frisbee, Arts and Crafts, and Competitive Cornhole. Sounds like a lot of fun. I've included the November Division-wide Events Calendar for your convenience. We encourage you to join us when you're available to cheer on your Panthers. They are doing so well, and please consider joining us on Monday at RCHS at 10:00 AM to honor veterans at a special Veterans Day Assembly with special guest speaker Darren Stevens, our current EMS coordinator and retired United States Army veteran. We hope you can make it. I've also attached our Division Newsletter, and that's on Board Docs as well. You can click on the link in this update, because there are so many things, and it's hard to get it on one page, but I've got you the highlights anyway. We thank you so much for your continuous support of our schools. We couldn't do it without you, and thank you for your service. Any questions for me?
Dr. Grimsley, thank you. Speaking of school announcements, I know we talked last month before a meeting about the amplification of your outdoor school announcements and the adverse effect it was having on some of my constituents in the Christmas Tree Lane area, and I want to thank you for working with. You know, these are the little things that local representatives hear about, among other things, and you took care of it with Carlos Seward, and I'm grateful for that. I want to say how much I appreciate you mentioning Mr. Stevens and what he's going to be doing, and I also wanted to take that as an opportunity to just say how exciting it is to see what Kat Waters is doing with healthcare careers and EMS stuff. It's awesome.
Yes, it's incredible. We've really amplified our collaboration with EMS services and the training opportunities and volunteer opportunities for our students, and seeing it hands-on is really making a difference. So, thank you to all of them, and Kat Waters has been an incredible liaison between our school and what's going on in the field.
And we've now learned that she was just at a volunteer recruitment and retention workshop over the weekend in Indiana, and so hopefully she'll put the hard sell on all of your students to volunteer and use some of the skills she just learned. But I think it's great to see you interacting with our volunteer fire and rescue committee in that way, and it's just really heartwarming, so thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
All right, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
All right, on to the Company Four Monthly Report.
Good afternoon. So, just let me catch you up on where we're at. We have four new certified EVOC drivers. This is the people that take the training and then are permitted to drive the emergency vehicles. One all the way through the fire truck, and the rest of us just with the ambulance. One of them's been released by our chief. That's a secondary process. People go through the training, take the test, get certified, and then the chief has to be satisfied that they are safe and good before they are released to go. And he's working with the other three to get them there. I'm most pleased to report that this EMR class that we've been doing has seven of the 10 people in it, our Company Four people. EMR is a new category in this county, and it's new in a lot of places in the state. It's like almost an EMT, 60 hours of training that we're doing, and that'll count towards EMT, and I suspect that a lot of the seven are going to go ahead and proceed and become EMTs. So we are, we're going to have some folks out on the street who are qualified to help. We will finish the EMR class in mid-November. Our membership, the people that have gone through the application form and that sort of thing, is up to 25-plus. We've got one new medic that affiliated last week, and we plan to vote in new additional members on Wednesday night. We continue to recruit in coordination with the county's, with Kat Waters, that was just mentioned here, our county's recruitment and retention coordinator. Thank you very much for her and for that. We continue to do training with the other units, especially with Chester Gap, and when you get to a scene, as I did yesterday, and there are two other companies there at the same time, the fact that we know each other and that we train together helps a lot in terms of coordination and making this work smoothly. And we are working with the coordinator, with Darren, to set up SOPs for the EMR people. There has to be protocols for them, and just like there are now for the EMTs. Governance-wise, we're making some progress, too. The Building and Grounds Committee's been very active, and we're getting that into shape, and I'm pleased to be able to report that we've got a Bylaws Committee now. They've gone over some draft bylaws that fix a lot of the problems that we found in the bylaws when we came in place, and we're hoping to be able to present them to the general membership probably at the December meeting, probably not Wednesday night. So, lots of progress, not there yet, getting there, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Questions?
I mean, I think we normally get a report on how many calls were in your first due, how many of those resulted in you responding, how many of those were deemed an assist, how many of those resulted in transport.
We were just talking about that before the meeting, having just gotten the numbers, and I can't securely report the absolute numbers, but I can say that we're getting out on about a third.
Okay. If you could let us know when you have those numbers.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. We can forward them to you.
Great.
Thank you. Any other parameters you want to add?
The entire board.
Yeah, the BOS at Rappahannock.
What I've been doing is sending things to Gary to distribute. Is that okay?
We asked last time that we talked about it, just send it to BOS. Send it to everybody, BOS@rappahannockcountypretending.gov.
If you don't mind getting emails from me, sure.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, we would rather know that we're getting emails.
Okay, I can do that.
And if you could include the fire data on there, too, that would be great.
Yep, fire and EMS, as separate listings.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, I understand.
What else? All right, well, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center presentation. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us. So, I understand that you've received the presentation. Do you want me to go through it, or, yeah? Okay.
Sure.
All right, I'll do that. All right, who's controlling the slides?
I.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So just to give you a little bit of an update, and you know, stop me if I'm going over things that you're well aware of, but the Small Business Development Center.
Remind everyone of your name and title and your colleague's name.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. Sure, oh yeah, should I introduce myself to start?
Just for the record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rebecca Haydock. I'm the Director of the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center, and we cover Rappahannock County as well as eight other counties, plus the city itself, for small businesses assistance. This is our Assistant Director, Rosie Beechy. Rosie covers all of the rural counties, and so she's been spending a bit of time in Rappahannock. And the Small Business Development Center is funded by the U.S. Small Business Administration and the municipalities that it serves primarily. Our services are free of charge for any small businesses. It can be someone who's just starting for the first time, or folks that have been in business for quite a while, and small businesses can go up to, you know, 500 employees and 300 million in sales, depending on the NAICS code. So we serve all of that. But, to give you a little bit of an update, we now, for three years in a row, have been the top-performing SBDC office in the state, and that is thanks to the municipalities that we serve for the outreach that you all are doing, connecting us to businesses, and then we help those businesses access capital, or access whatever means of resources they need to do business successfully today. So, we attribute that to all of you and just to a great team of volunteers and ambassadors in the communities. Go to the next slide. So, this goes over a lot of what we do. We have the same research capabilities that the banks do, so if someone is looking to get a loan, if someone's looking to do business in a new market, we can give them industry information. If folks are new to an industry, we can help them learn about that, but we also cover all of the basics. We have programs in launching a product, preparation for that, starting a business, everything from understanding the zoning and the permitting to all of the planning and trying to, what we call, make original mistakes in business. So, we offer about 70 training programs a year. All of those are available hybrid. There's very few that we do that are in-person only, so anyone from Rappahannock can access 99% of those programs. And we also have a newsletter that we send out twice a month that has programs and information that has nothing to do with us. As I had mentioned, it's been a while, but SBDC belongs to the communities. It's not about itself. It's about serving, it's about connecting to the right resources, be that us or someone else. So, we're really just, you know, we're a direct service provider, but also there to connect to other resources. It could be international, state, innovation-based, other grants, things like that. I should also mention, we're doing a few new things in the communities. We've been doing community business launch programs for communities that want to bring more businesses to the area. We are working on revitalization programs in some communities. So, one of the things we would love to know from you all and anyone else is, what do your communities need? Is there additional business assistance that you're looking for? Is there revitalization work that needs to be done? I had mentioned to Karen that we're talking to Alamo Rock County right now about their zoning, because their zoning does not account for people that are running businesses from their home. To be a consultant, you've got to provide a map of your house, a drawing of where you're doing business, all kinds of information, and these can be very small businesses. So, across the country, people are looking at, how do we become more current with today's population? And folks working from home and doing business differently. So we tackle those kinds of issues as well, and try to help the community with any of that. And, we wanted to share a story specifically for Rappahannock, so of course, if anybody hasn't been yet to Flint Hill Market, please go, it's wonderful. David has been a fantastic client and gave us permission to share the story with you, so wanted to share a little bit of the celebration. And again, all of this is because of your support, so we thank you for helping us to help these businesses. So we wanted to share some numbers. We went back a few years, so you can see what's going on. It's always nice to see trends. Things go up and down, we never know exactly why, in terms of how many clients we see, how many people are taking training, what are the hours, but regardless, we pick up the phone for everyone that calls. We return phone calls, unless somebody's out sick, it's within 24 hours. And, you know, sometimes people call with what we call their hair-on-fire problems. Other times, they just want to get trained, they want to explore things, they'll sign up for classes, but we do have a full-time client services coordinator that responds, and then we have business advisors like Rosie, myself, Ariel Breder, we have a few contractors that are specialists that respond to the clients. We'll go to the next one. So specifically for Rappahannock, I was actually at Sperry Fest with Rosie, but she had on the right shirt, so I stepped out of the picture. But that was a lovely event, and, you know, we come to the county, we come to events, and if we're ever asked to come to an event, specifically if there's going to be businesses there, we're eager to be there and meet the business owners. So this is just a list of the few activities that we've had, and SBA was there, and they spotted us, so that was also nice. All right, next slide. Terry, I don't know, have you let, I think Bonnie might be aware, we received a grant, Go Virginia, which is the statewide organization that hones in on needs in different regions. We're in Go Virginia Region 9. They wanted someone to address rural entrepreneurship, so we applied for a grant to hire Terry, as well as Christine Caldwell, who is working right now on running the Community Investment Collaborative 16-Week Entrepreneurship Workshop, which is being held in Culpeper and Orange. Those two hires were made under that grant, and Terry's job, if you haven't met him yet, he is working on outreach and reaching out to folks to hear what's important to you, what do you feel is needed in the community, and from a Go Virginia perspective, they really care about the traded sectors, so he's trying to meet those traded sector companies, like food manufacturers, light industrial information technology, and so on. Okay, next slide. This is just a list of some of what I've gone over, lots of training classes. We have a 40-plus-page website, because we know some people don't want to talk to a counselor, they just want to get the information that we need, so we keep that updated all the time, and do that twice monthly newsletter, which I think you may have not opted in, but I think we put you all on the mailing list, so you're probably getting the newsletter unless it's going to spam. All right, thank you. Is that my last slide? Oh, nope, there we go. So we have, this is how we do it. The top is staff, that's our all-full-time staff, Terry is now part-time. We have about six contractors that we use regularly, and then on the bottom are folks that we don't pay for, that we tap into. We have an international trade group in the state office, a craft beverage and food assistance expert. We have people that work only with innovation companies, government contracting folks, and the state procurement and small business certification folks. So, that's the team that we're most involved with. I know this isn't a formal ask, but I thought I'd put in here what we're looking for for support this year. So, Bonnie and Gary are on our advisory board. The advisory board is made up primarily of the Economic Development Directors. We've asked for the same funding for the last three years, and they decided we should at least ask for a 3% increase, because we've certainly had that, more than that, in the increase in salaries in the bulk of our budget as salaries, so that's essentially what the ask is. We do raise an additional 40%, so the municipalities and SBA are about 60% of the budget. And that's about it? That's all of what we served you? Any questions?
I'm just curious about your international trade team. So is that export-promotion primarily, or is it also related to U.S. import compliance, bringing things into the United States? Is it both?
Both. So, yeah, I'm a Certified Global Business Professional. I work on the international team as well, and we, yeah, I'm always asking those questions. Sometimes people are importing something from Russia or China.
Right, sanctions, really.
Right, we're trying to make sure everything's okay. Even software is an issue, but, yeah, both. And VEDP, the Economic Development Partnership for the State, has a program now specifically for importing and for, as well, logistics. It's, you know, cost, we have one company, their shipping went from $1,500 a container to $12,000 a container. Yeah, but of course, the interest of the state is more exports, so we work on that. We spend a little bit more resources on trying to help people figure out, can you do business internationally?
Other markets, yeah. Okay, great, I might follow up with you on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just wondering what you see as your biggest success in Rappahannock County? What do people, what do most of our businesses ask for and receive from your group?
I mean, we cheered Flint Hill because that was, you know, a startup, and we hadn't seen a startup in a while, but for the most part, it is about financial, you know, looking for, or marketing, you know, questions about that, and those are different now. For example, people, they don't realize that if they can't get a bank loan, they can probably get a loan from a community development financial institution, or there might be a grant. Like before the pandemic, people said, oh, there's no grants for businesses. Well, there's actually a lot of grants for businesses now. So, it's a common question, and sometimes we do find those grants, specifically USDA. There's so much for agribusiness, and Rosie is a specialist in agribusiness, and she's on the statewide, or, I'm sorry, nationwide, America's SBDC Agribusiness Team, and, you know, there's so much available that people aren't aware of. So, we haven't seen as much of that as we'd like to see out of Rappahannock, and part of what, you know, our ask as well is ambassadors, finding more people in the community and amongst you all that can let people know that this help is there for them. And if there's a particular need for a particular industry, or if it's marketing, or if it's digital, or financial, we'll do a program specifically on that. We're happy to come up and offer something for what we're seeing most of. Some people like to meet in person rather than meet with us on Zoom, so we're always happy to do that.
Excellent.
We do have a handoff on the county website for SBDC, and engagement is one of our hardest things, I think, and making sure the community and business community knows about the, what's available through the Central Virginia SBDC. So, to the extent that you can push out to your communities what they can do, it'd be very helpful.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to meet with any one of you anytime, and, yeah. Rosie, did I miss anything?
Um, no.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you. How often do you come and visit us? I feel like it's been, it's been more than a year, maybe, or?
Oh, me personally?
Or your team.
Yeah, there's been a lot of visits. Rosie and, it was, yep, we end up here. Usually I meet with Bonnie.
But for these kinds of updates, I think it's useful to be, for everyone to be reminded of the scope of what you do. And, you know, for example, the international trade side is really interesting, and my guess is the last time you were, I probably asked the same question, but it's a reminder, you know, that you have a lot to offer potentially.
I wasn't certified until the last time I was here.
Okay, okay. So, is, I mean, but I guess, are you coming to see our board or boards in the committees you work for about once a year? Is that the rotation?
Yes, we're happy to come more often if you'd like.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll dig around on your website, and I appreciate the update, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. When you come up to the mic, give us your name and your district that you live in. Yes, ma'am?
Sheila Gresinger, Hampton District, had to think for a minute. I just wanted to take a brief minute to talk about the courthouse. In my, I went back and I analyzed a bunch of stuff, and I think a lot of the problem was just a lack of communication, or not enough communication to get to people, and so it all sort of became almost confrontational when I really don't think that needed to have happened. I went back over some notes that the building committee had been in existence for quite a while. They had been tasked with studying the buildings in our courthouse complex and, you know, the state of disrepair, and then that evolved into more of a concentration on the courthouse specifically, and then things sort of got, in my opinion, things sort of got murky, because the building committee then took it upon themselves to decide to think of a more comprehensive building rather than a single courthouse, and in doing that, they came up with the idea of consolidating various aspects, bringing back onto the campus various facilities, taking things that are in outside buildings and bringing them back to this area, which then put it into a huge building. Unfortunately, I think there was a lack of communication about this particular path, and so then it seemed to have erupted, if you will, with a single picture of this huge, huge building that was unattractive in its first revelation, and then they went back and said, okay, we can do it a different way. various aspects, bringing back onto the campus various facilities, taking things that are in outside buildings and bring them back to this area, which then put it into a huge building. Unfortunately, I think there was a lack of communication about this particular path. And so then it seemed to have erupted, if you will, with a single picture of this huge, huge building that was unattractive in its first revelation. And then they went back and said, okay, we can do it a different way, the front of the building. Now, going back to information on the board docs, which I don't think a lot of people do, and that's part of a lack of communication as well. I mean, people come to the board meetings. I don't know how many people come to the building committee meetings. I hardly think there are very many people who go visit board docs, which was the fallback position, oh, we put it on board docs. That's not sufficient, in my opinion. So back in 2020, apparently the building committee talked to, did talk to the judges and the clerks, and found that the security and safety of the building at that time, in addition to deteriorating, was not secure or safe. I don't think that was relayed very well to the general public. And so we kept having meetings where people were coming and saying, we want to keep the courthouse. Oh, don't take away our courthouse. And there was a whole bruhah, which complicated the situation. And then I think September 11th, when the judges came and specifically put forth that this building will not work, especially Judge Fleming said that his court bill, his office was back here, and that there would be no way for him to escape. That was backed up with Sheriff Compton and Art Golf saying that they'd had a couple of incidents or happenings where because of the capabilities of this building were not sufficient to divide various people in court sessions. So all of that information is very important. And here's what it boils down to. The lack of communication, we're in an agricultural. So here's how I thought to put this together. When people put a garden together, they prep the soil. They dig around and they get the soil ready for the reception of the seeds to grow. I don't think there was enough communication with the general public to accept that this was a process that was probably going to evolve into a building as has been presented, which is probably okay. And the building we have now can be honored and respected and kept as a way to preserve the history of our county. So there are ways to do this. I used to be in advertising. When I would talk to clients, we would talk about ads that they had to pay for. And then I would also tell them, here's another way to get your message out to the public. It's through public relations, PR releases. They don't cost any money. You don't have to wait for an article with the Rappahannock News to put something forward. You can put together a press release, which is in effect softening the ground, preparing the soil for the conversation that needs to take place. Now, the good thing with Mother Nature is every spring you get a new opportunity to, if you have a failed garden, which is what I think we're dealing with right now, you have a way to re-prep the soil and prepare it for a conversation that possibly can go forward in a better manner. Okay, that's my garden story. Okay, the other thing that's been brought to my attention is that, oh, this current board just has so much dissension. It's just awful. Well, guess what? This board has had dissension for years. And my story is, when Roger Welch was still the chair, there were instances where people yelled at him. So this is not something new. However, this is a habit that has, that takes time to establish itself. And so like habits, there are ways to address that habit and decide to establish new habits of conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Bruce, Perryville Courthouse. I found Gary's letter that's on the agenda about the discussion you'll have later today too difficult for me to understand. And I don't really know where we are on progress towards the courthouse and the other buildings. I personally think we need a new building for the courthouse, not try to modify this one. I also think that the circuit court clerk, the combined courts, and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office should all be in that building, one building for all the court functions. It should be secure with one entry, not a variety of entrances, except for where the sheriff's office can bring prisoners in. If you put all three of those offices into the one courthouse, you free up the existing Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the existing Circuit Court Clerk's Office, and all of the offices that were down below where we are today. Another thing that I think I have learned is that you plan to move the treasurer somewhere else while their office is being redone, put them back, move the Commissioner of Revenue somewhere else while their office is being done, put them back. And I'm not sure what your plans for the registrar's office are, but I spoke to her, and she says she does not need to be in a building herself. She needs a small addition to house the big machines that they have. So if you put all of those offices into one courthouse and it's secure, and it's not just the judges, judges are important too, but staff, people who are sitting in the audience during court, they are just as important security-wise. So people who work in the building, it's not just on court days. It's people who work in the building need to be secure as well. I did attend a number of building committee meetings last year. I inquired if anybody ever talked to anybody else in any other county, if they ever talked to any other staff members anywhere. Do you have any idea what goes on inside the walls? Nobody ever had any answers. I think that's critically important before you really decide what you're going to do. You just, I don't think you need to redo the church over here. I believe, I remember hearing at one building committee meeting, you wanted to renovate the church so you could move the treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue in there as a possibility while their offices were being redone. And then that would leave the church open for some other office use. You speak of rentals. Mr. Glennie stood at this microphone several months ago and said, you're paying $30,000 a month in rentals. I inquired about that, excuse me, and I learned, excuse me, I learned that we're paying a little over $50,000 a year in rentals, not $30,000 a month. So the rental is not a big deal in terms of money. But if you emptied these offices, you then have space for the zoning and building office. You then have space for the extension office, and in all likelihood, there's not going to be an extension office very long because all the farmers are on the internet. They get all of their access, just like everybody else does. So I just feel like that, I'm not sure what it is you're going to discuss. I didn't understand Mr. Curry's letter very well. I don't know what you're planning to go forth with today in approving some part of the whole project or both parts of the whole project. But I do have concerns, and I feel like that whatever is done, you need to have some more input from people who actually work in these offices and know what you need, from people who have, from counties who have built new courthouses and what they require. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane.
Ron Macklin, Jackson District. Wanted to pick up where I left off. Last month, I was talking about the church building over here. I told you about the side or whatever, but the front of that building also is compromised structurally at the ground. The siding itself is right at ground level, and it's been that way for years. That building's approaching 200 years old. And what I'm here to urge you to do is to take a look at that part of the building. And it's not rocket science. It's not going to cost any money at all. What we need to do is remove the siding, a couple of runs of siding at the bottom, which is going to give you a view of the sill beams. And you're going to be able to see what the condition is. And it's something that Ricky Jenkins can do it. I mean, it's like I said, it's not rocket science, doesn't cost us anything. But you build from the ground up, and you renovate from the ground up. And if we pull that off, and we find out we've got a serious problem, there's no, you know, you've got to make a decision there. Are we going to correct this? And deal with that first before you spend any more money figuring out, you know, how you're going to put the offices in the building. And another thing in the plan that I saw, the floor plan, you've got a 14-foot ceiling in that church, and you're going to build walls to make office spaces and bathrooms and whatever else goes in there, closets. Well, is it going to be like a five-by-eight bathroom with a 14-foot ceiling, or an 11-by-11 office with a 14-foot ceiling, heating? I mean, that doesn't work for heating and air conditioning. It just, the whole thing just doesn't make any sense. So, but what I really urge you to do is, let's look at the structural issue before we go any farther, because that may answer a question that says, we're not going any farther. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I clarify something I said?
Let me come back to you, okay? Nope, okay. Anybody else? All right, Ms. Bruce.
Back to the church issue. If you build a courthouse first and put all of the court offices in the courthouse, if you do that, you then have vacant the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, and everything that's downstairs. The treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue could be moved into those two offices, and they could be renovated at the same time. They could then be put back into their original positions. And then you have open the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and whatever's downstairs here. In my opinion, you don't need to do the church if the purpose is to move the commissioner in and out, and the treasurer in and out. Because if you've already built your courthouse, you have a place to move them when their offices are renovated. That's kind of a two-stage operation, not everything all at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. You all have looked at the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'm sorry. You beat me to the punch. I would like to just pull the last check run, please, the one that totals, I think, $250,000.
I'll amend my motion to include that detail.
Sorry about that. That was slow in the drawing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion at second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, on the, just bear with me. So it's really the, it's the end-of-month check run. And I confess that I don't have comparative data, but the size of that run struck me as high relative to prior months, and perhaps high relative to our normal. And I realize some months are spending months compared to others. And I was just curious if anyone might know what, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's not a big number, but it caught me off guard.
I did, only because I had that question recently from another board member, so I started tracking this. So in October, it was 333,000 compared to November, 253,000. But August was 446,000, September was 152,000. So they just vary.
What, what are, what's, are there any single line items in the 253,000 that account for?
There's $30,000 for half of the payment to the clearing. There's about $19,000 to the audit consultant.
There's $27,000 for Encompass on 11/6 for the...
Okay, so that's the quarterly payment to Encompass.
That's a big one, too. I saw that.
Thank you.
But anytime you get to these quarters.
I can't see it.
Yeah, and that's part of it, too. Okay. Well, I'll do, I'll do a better job of tracking month to month so that I don't have to ask this question, because...
Well, I can include that.
There are some vehicles, it looks like, too.
Yes, Kayla just said that the, one of the sheriff's vehicles came in, and that was close to $60,000.
Okay.
But I can, I can include this as part of each month's check run data. That way we all have it.
Yeah, I think just seeing it in isolation, I think it'd be useful just to see where months fit.
Understood.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the third check run dated November 6, 2023.
I have a motion at a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion at a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Let's see, is Janie coming? Oh, good.
I'm going to do that first.
After, oh, yeah. All right, now we have a resolution of appreciation.
Is Ms. Giles will come join me?
I thought we already had a party, another one.
She doesn't want to leave us. Resolution of appreciation and commendation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to Patricia Giles for her service to Rappahannock County. Whereas, I'm going to call you Pat.
I'm sure.
Whereas, Pat Giles retired from public service for citizens of Rappahannock County on September 30, 2023. And whereas, nearly 35 years ago, on February 1, 1989, Mrs. Giles first served the citizens of Rappahannock County as a secretary in the Commonwealth Attorney Office, eventually retiring as legal secretary. And whereas during her employment with the county, she was known for her loyalty and dedication to the office, and was always conscientious about her responsibilities, constantly serving others. And whereas, the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors will always consider Mrs. Giles a colleague and a friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors hereby express their appreciation of and commendation to Pat A. Giles for her long and distinguished service, and wish her good health and best wishes during retirement. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant, adopted this sixth day of November, 2023. Resolution of appreciation and commendation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to Lieutenant Janie Jenkins for her service to Rappahannock County on the occasion of being named Dispatcher of the Year by the Virginia Sheriff's Association. Whereas Lieutenant Janie Jenkins serves the citizens of Rappahannock County in the sheriff's office, leading the E-911 Communication Center. And whereas, in September of 2023, the Virginia Sheriff's Association presented Lieutenant Jenkins with the honor of being named 2023 Dispatcher of the Year. And whereas, upon the And whereas, upon issuance of the award, the Virginia Sheriff's Association highlighted Lieutenant Jenkins's 21 years of service with the Rapidhane County Sheriff's Office, her expertise with the technology supporting emergency 911 dispatching, and her mastery of calming life-threatening fire, medical, and law enforcement emergencies. And whereas the members of the Rapidhane County Board of Supervisors wish to acknowledge Lieutenant Jenkins's dedication and commitment to the citizens of and visitors to Rapidhane County, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rapidhane County Board of Supervisors hereby express their appreciation of and commendation to Lieutenant Janie M. Jenkins for her distinguished service that has brought her the honor of being named Virginia Sheriff's Association Dispatcher of the Year. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rapidhane County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant adopted this sixth day of November, 2023.
All right, moving into appointments. I was wondering, Madam Chairman, if we might consider maybe reordering the agenda slightly. Mr. Henry is here to present on the chimney project, and that, I think, will be a relatively short agenda item. And then it seems like many members of the public are here for the courthouse item. And I wondered if it made sense to reorder the agenda to take those two items first. And I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second. So it's to take...
Blue Ridge Heritage Project Monument H2, and go ahead and address that now. And then immediately following that, go ahead and work on G4 County Construction and Renovation Projects that would seem to align with public interests.
You're going to read in the crowd in that respect. Yeah, you're very good that way.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. All right, so we're still on to the appointments, I see.
So I think now we're on H2.
Okay.
What I gather.
Blue Ridge Heritage Project Monument Interpretive Panel.
Mr. Henry is here to speak on this.
Thank you for allowing me to come and make a brief presentation to the board today. I'm Bill Henry. I'm the founder and current president of the board, chairman of the board of the Blue Ridge Heritage Project. We're a nonprofit that was founded in 2013. And we were organized with the specific purpose of creating monuments to the families and the individuals who were displaced from Shenandoah National, from the Blue Ridge Mountains before the creation of Shenandoah National Park. We were wanting to originally get one monument in each of the eight counties where land was acquired for the park. We are still looking ahead to find out what comes next. We're looking right now at trying to wrap up the formation, I mean, the finishing of our monuments. The board, a long time ago, when we first came up with this idea, we wanted the stone chimney to be the replica of a stone chimney to be our monument, because that was often what was left when the homes were burned, when the people were evicted. We wanted each monument to have a plaque with the names of the people from those counties, from each county, that would recognize and honor those people. A lot of research went into that. It's easy to find the people who received money for their property, but there were a lot of tenants and others who did not own the land. And so we have put a lot of time and effort into creating as accurate as possible a list of people who were living in the Blue Ridge at the time that the park was created. The board wanted to have three, at our eight sites, we wanted to have three things in common. We wanted the stone chimney. We wanted the plaque with the names. And we wanted an interpretive panel to basically give visitors an overview, a brief overview. We wanted to make it sure that you could read it while you were standing there. We wanted an overview of the history. So the people would come there, and they wouldn't just look at the monument and the names and go, what's that all about? So we wanted there to be a brief history. And that's what we're here to talk, I'm here to talk about today. Excuse me. Rapidhane has a beautiful monument. It was built by a stonemason, who he and his wife, who was also his helper, were both descendants of families that were removed from the park. They've built four of our chimneys. And it's just quite an honor to have that chimney here. You have a very attractive site. But we would like to try to finish the site by having this interpretive panel put up. And we're, the board is looking into options for that. And I wanted to approach you all today to ask for your support in making this happen. We have a couple of options to go with. One of them would be that the county, some would form a small committee to take this on and design a panel that would look just like what you want it to look like. Otherwise, we're probably going to end up going with a, we have several other counties that have not got this panel in place, and we would probably go with a generic panel. And so there would be, you know, two other counties that would have the same thing. What you see over here on the screen is at the Rockingham County Monument at Elkton. The blue box, that's our historical narrative. That just sort of summarizes what the project is about, with the, you know, the history of the whole thing. We have the map of our monuments over on, the location of our monuments over on the right-hand side. And the area underneath of the brown and the pink there above the blue is a couple paragraphs that the Rockingham County Committee added to their, to their panel to sort of personalize it. So we're hoping to support whatever the decision is made locally. When the Blue Ridge Heritage Project was founded, we decided that we wanted to be a grassroots group. We did not want to have this coming from the top down. We wanted the decisions to be made at the local level, and that would come up from the bottom. And so we're hoping to continue that with you by supporting the Blue Ridge Heritage Project, board supporting that process here in Rapidhane County. So thank you for your time. If you have questions, I'd be happy to...
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess we would probably have to put a committee together, but I guess we have to be coordinating with the other, with you, I guess, the other counties.
Well, we, what we are looking for is not to be dictated to you about how your panel is going to look. You know, we're happy that you wanted to do it. You've got a beautiful monument site there, really alike the terrace and the low wall behind. The location would be obviously important to put it with a location that would not interfere with, you know, distract from the chimney standing there. If the committee decided that they wanted to have additional panels, like in Rockingham, they have, Rockingham has four additional panels. Green County has six additional, has six additional panels. You know, it tells the stories. It tells, you know, a lot of the text, a lot of photographs from the period. Very beautiful. But again, we're not asking for all of that. We're just asking for the one that would give an overview and would give some context to the reason why there's a stone chimney and what the names are all about.
Does it want to quickly reveal, is that a little bit larger site than ours?
I think probably a little bit larger site. You know, it's hard to say, because it sort of blends in with, you know, they've got a fence behind it between there and the playground and the mountain museum. But I'm not sure, you know, dimension-wise. But it's still a very small site. But they managed to work in some displays right in front of their chimney, right near it.
I'm just thinking.
I don't know if people on Zoom can hear you.
Sorry, I don't, after the one the other night, you know, I'm kind of worried about these things. Anyway, we've got several people, I think, in the room that had some association with that. Ms. Giles was on that committee. I was on the committee. Might be a couple others, and I hate to miss anybody. But I think Supervisor Beniac, at the time, worked with the committee somewhat. But I don't think he was actually a member of it. They hauled rocks. So I think that we ought to put together some sort of a committee so that we get the details worked out and get the site nailed down.
What's the, what's the timeline? When would this need to be executed?
Well, we don't have a timeline for you. We're, you know, the board is looking at, the eighth and final monument is under, well, it's not actually, they have, they've broken ground, but they haven't actually got started on the construction yet. Still working on fundraising in the Augusta County site.
Okay.
But what we're looking at is hopefully having all of the eight sites completed, you know, with, you know, your site, your monument is there. We just want the panel up. So we don't really have a timeline.
So all eight would be finished with panels, and then you can say...
Ideally, yeah.
Next project.
But we're, you know, again, we're not, you know, we've, the board has made it very clear to, you know, the committees that we don't want to make the decisions for them. We want this to be a local decision-making process to involve as many people as possible. And so I think Mr. Fraser's idea of getting a committee together, engaging some of the people that were involved in the original building or, you know, design and building of the monument, and then doing what we can to support you from the board.
Great.
And I had asked Mr. Henry to come and attend the meeting and just sort of give this project air through the board supervisors' meeting. Maybe the paper could put some information about, but it's starting to gain traction again. And this is something that we really need to do to complete the monument. And I had reached out to the tolls and let them know you would be here today. And I talked to Pat and a couple other local families. And I did talk to John Hallberg down at the mill. And he said he was certainly open to being a meeting place
Yeah.
for the group to work. So I think that there would be a lot of excitement around and give us a reason to gather and celebrate again at that, at that site. And that would be something to look forward to.
And Green County, when they, when they dedicated their chimney, did not have their panels in place. They created those later. They had, I believe they had the money, but they created that later and installed them. And then they had a second dedication ceremony for the panels. And it really did get a lot of community support. And it was never my intent that lots of people would flock to these chimney sites, but that has been the case. You hear about people coming here from quite a distance. And I think it's important for them, if they don't know the story, for them to hear the story. And if you want to expand on that beyond just the basic history, then that would, we would certainly help, you know, I hope you would do that.
Do you sell those T-shirts? Those are cool T-shirts.
Actually, I don't, we don't have any more. We're thinking about getting some more made.
Yeah, those T-shirts, they're cool.
Thank you. Yeah, we had these made up for some fundraising back about five years ago, I guess.
I'll buy one.
Well, we can, we can have, I've got the sill screen place that has the design, and all we got to do is just put it in order. So we can, we can make that happen, I think.
Good.
I'll let you know as soon as we, if we make a decision to do that.
Christmas is coming up. Everyone will get one. Everyone will get one.
Any other questions?
So there is a lease involved in this location, and there's some peculiar wording about signage. And I think just we need to parse that with the county attorney and make sure that it will accept additional signage within the lease. And if it doesn't, for some reason, I imagine the grantor would probably be willing to hear about this opportunity. And we just need to make sure we dot those i's and cross those t's.
Yeah.
Do you need any sort of action from the board for...
I think we need to, oh, get the legal review first. And then if there's a hurdle, we'll let you know. And then find a solution that might work for that hurdle.
That's good. Good.
Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Henry, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us today.
Thank you, appreciate you sitting here.
I think that this idea is an amazing compliment to the monument. And I've had feedback from folks that have gone up there who have loved it. And I think that this kind of thing would just only add to it. And so I wanted to ask real quick if you've had feedback about the ones that you've already put in? And how, what has the engagement been like?
Well, what I, one of the things that has kind of floored me was how much the monuments are being used by the education, you know, the schools. Rockingham has, actually, they delve pretty deeply into their history of the displacement and added some SOLs to the, to the required list that require the students to have some education. And they have had field trips to the monument there in Elkton. And if you haven't been there, if you're swinging through Elkton, you know, take a little detour. It's just about a block and a half off of Main Street. Green County, the same thing. We've, there's a social studies classes. Actually, it's just a walking field trip for them to walk over to the monument and see the displays. I do know that we've had people who are versed in the history of the displacement who have met with school groups, myself included, at monument sites to talk about the history and all. So the education component of the potential for the monuments, I think, is very real. And I've been very gratified to see that. It wasn't really on my mind that, when we came up with this idea, but it's something that has pleased me greatly to see it being used for that purpose.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Now going into, this would be the County Construction and Renovation Projects, I guess? Or not?
G4, two different people. Bill Fletcher, of course, and Russell Jenkins.
So there was, at the last board meeting, it was a request, there was a recognition that there was no action on that agenda and that something should be added to the November agenda. This is added to the November agenda. There was too much to put into the board docs narrative. I wrote a short memorandum expressing that I'm not clear where we stand in certain areas. And one way or another, we need to get some direction to make sure the projects continue to move forward.
I had a phone conversation with the architect. And I told him until we had a little bit more information or instructions from the board, I wasn't sure what to do with myself exactly.
For the envelope work.
I'm sorry?
For the envelope work.
Right. He was supposed to be writing, the last work that he had been tasked with was writing the scope of work. And I guess he's ready to get with us on that. But, you know, quite frankly, I'm kind of in a quandary, what to do.
Well, considering that I brought it up at the last meeting, my idea was that what we could do was bifurcate the process and have staff go ahead and do the RFP for that envelope work, which I think we're, that's done.
Yeah, it's done.
Sorry, but have us go and do the RFP for the, for the...
Courthouse.
Yes, for the courthouse. Split the two work streams. So that was my suggestion at the last meeting. Then the building committee got up and left. And at this moment, what I see is I see us being able to take the good work that you guys have done and move forward with it. Considering that the building committee has, I had a fantastic discussion with Mr. Waters. He called me, and he's interested in being engaged with the old buildings. But I don't see a usefulness for the building committee any longer. And I think that because we have to manage all the decisions here as a board, I think that we should just have, as I mentioned at the last meeting, a standing agenda item that will be the building, you know, building, county buildings, and that we can move forward in a productive way on these two things. The buildings that need to get fixed, and then this totally different process that's not unrelated, but is a different process of...
So you're eliminating the building committee?
Yes, I would like to. I would like to bring it all in here.
So you're going to do how much work? Or we're going to put it all on Mr. Curry? That's what I'm asking. I mean, you say you want to do away with something, but how much more work are you going to be taking upon yourself?
Mr. Fraser, at the last meeting...
No, no, I asked a question. No, no, I, I asked a question, that should be a, a, a pretty simple answer. Are we gonna put more work on Mr. Curry? Is that what you're proposing?
You gonna let me finish my answer?
Well, no, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to lay the groundwork so that you actually answer the question that I think we and the public want to hear. If, you said you want to offer, you want to issue a RFP, but you don't know what type of building you want.
Mr. Fraser, you gonna let me answer?
Yeah, yeah. I just thought I'd get that out there so that you can answer that type of question.
So at the last meeting.
I understand, I was at the last meeting.
We have a pact that I won't interrupt you, you don't interrupt me.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I, I came up with an idea. And I wanted to debate the merits of that idea in public. That didn't happen. What I would like to do is I would like to take on as much work as I need to take on to get this done. That's what I'm here to do. And I think because all important decisions have to go through this board, let's get it done. If that means increasing my workload by tenfold, that's what I will do.
Well, we, the building committee brought all that work back to you, and, and stages.
The, the building committee lost its effectiveness when they were not capable of debating the merits of an idea.
No, no, don't, don't, don't say derogatory things like that.
No, that's, that's.
Those folks are not here, do not say derogatory things about public that are not here.
You're right.
Okay?
Mr. Glennie, I will say that Mr. Glennie was not capable of debating the merits of an idea, got up, walked out. I have seen the usefulness of that expire. So what I would like to do, I'll just finish.
Okay.
I'll let you, don't. I will take on as much work as I need to take on to get this done. That's why I ran, that's why I'm here. And what I see as being incredibly useful is just to bring all of this really important work right here. We appropriated a million dollars almost two years ago. We need to get on it. And I think the fastest way to do that is to bring it in here.
The reason Mr. Glennie or anybody else on the committee could not articulate the issue any better that night was because this board could not articulate their position.
I'm.
What, what y'all have asked to do is to, when you're talking about starting all over and looking at other options, you're talking about going back two years. Two years. That's what you wanted to do last, at the last meeting. And the meeting prior to that, when I asked you and Mr. Whitson both if you had read the guidelines for the courthouses, you said you hadn't, and neither had you read the, the, um, space requirements. And Mr. Whitson's.
I know what I saw.
I know what you said, and that pretty much was taken by the public that you hadn't read them either. So the thing is, if y'all can't, if this board cannot articulate what it wants staff or volunteers to do, how do you expect them to, to, to prepare an argument in, in opposition?
I, I do, I do. I, 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 there's two, there's two action items, right? Do you want to say?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's easier, I think the bifurcation makes it easier to discuss. So if we looked at the envelope, the old buildings, the work that hasn't been done in a very long time, and try to determine how we can get that work going and then not get into the position we're in today, which is buildings falling apart, um, I don't know if we need to give staff more authority to take care of maintenance. And I don't know if that's a dollar value or what. But we can't let our buildings, the ones we have today and anything we build, get to this level again. So I'm wondering if it would make sense to divide the two conversations.
May I just say that the entire reason that the building committee, to my understanding, was founded and chartered was to relieve staff of some of this decision-making and work. And in fact, we have a charter on file. It's on the building committee, uh, subheading on the county website. And everything we have been doing has been within the purview of our charter. And I made sure when I was put on the building committee, as I did when I was put on the public safety committee, that I understood my purpose as a member of that committee before I did work on that committee, because I did not want to overstep my boundaries. And so I just want to be very clear that the building committee was only doing the work that the board of supervisors has indicated that they should and empowered them to do. So that's two years ago we adopted that charter. And it was all encompassing for the county buildings and grounds. And it's on, it's on the county website. I thought, am I misremembering something? Let me go back and read our charter, because everything we did was under our purview. The reason we adopted that charter is because we had been trying to work through it vis a vis monthly meetings guided by staff on the projects, and the projects weren't moving forward, because it is simply too much detail to tackle in the course of a regularly scheduled board of supervisors' meetings. It's all that there is to it. It's too much to add another layer to staff, it's too much to add another layer to these meetings. And so we did a breakout committee, and they moved the work forward diligently. I commend the building committee for continuously keeping the board updated, because if you'll recall, Mr. Fraser and I furnish you a building committee report every month. And as I stated, as a building committee member, on many occasions, when we would furnish quarterly updates of our compe, comprehensive updates of our work, the purpose of the exercise is so we all end up at the same point together in the end. And not with the building committee on an ledge and the board of supervisors somewhere else. And that is where we now are. The building committee is on an ledge, and the board of supervisors is somewhere else. So how do we get everybody back in the same space to get the work done in a reasonable amount of time? The reason that the church has been fast-tracked as a separate project is because that's to be flex space. And that is a relatively simple restoration compared to the rest of the work that we have to do. And once that restoration is complete, we will have flex space for offices to move into. The courthouse, as I think we have all identified, and if not, I hate to break the news to you, is going to be a much longer, more elaborate pump, uh, process than anything else we have before us. So we had to pick a way to get things done while we're working on the courthouse. That's why it's a two-step process. It had to be done that way, or we'd be waiting on the courthouse to do anything. And that is a very long-term project.
We just lost two years.
Yes, sir.
Um, maybe I can split this down the middle to some extent. Um, I would just say that for sure, you all did good foundational work through the building committee. And I, I remember, I think it was in December, January, when, uh, when I came back to the county after my absence. Um, I remember kind of a, a meeting that perhaps I had to dial into. And the question from you all was, hey, we need a direction. And, um, so I went ahead and supported the direction of looking at a new building. And then, um, you came out with, I guess, a conceptual plan for what, what it could look like. And I recognize it was only in concept, it wasn't detailed, or it wasn't the final product, but you did the, the balloon test and all that stuff. And I think that's all super. And then, in addition to that, we had, um, members of the judiciary branch of our local and regional government come in and speak to us, and I think clarified that we are most likely going to need it to head in the direction of a, a new courthouse that doesn't utilize this facility in any kind of modified form. And, um, just as one member of our board, it took me a little while to get there, and, and I know you've heard my consternation about that. So I think that the building committee definitely has helped a lot. Um, your work has helped a lot with advancing all of us in the community. Aside from what Ms. Gressinger said, and there's some validity in what she said, I think we all on this board probably could have done a better job getting out in front of communication or community members about where we're likely headed. That's kind of water on the, under the bridge. But now I see a situation where you've done all this foundational work. Um, I see it really as foundational work. I don't know that we're even close to taking your concept of a new building and its location into any kind of detailed form. And I understand that that's kind of where we had to go, need to go next. And I say I'm splitting the middle because, number one, I, you know, I can get over the fact that people were upset, um, at our, at the meeting when we met with the building committee. I get that. Um, I understand people's emotions run high, I definitely get that. Um, and I understand that, uh, members of the building committee were not, um, happy. All that said, we're now at a point where the, the public's attention is now really focused on this. And I hear someone like Diane Bruce get up here, who based on many years of direct experience in the judiciary, or Judge Clemens, come to us and say, this is, this is where I think you need to go. I hear that loud and clear. And I think to Mr. Carney's point, and this is where I'm just gonna be friends with everyone here. Um, I'm gonna try. Um, I think he also makes a valid point that we have, we have the foundational work that you've all done. The public's attention now appropriately is drawn to what is going to be the largest project in Rappin' in County history, as Mr. Carney has articulated previously. And I think we can all accept that. We're five people, we have staff, we have additional staff that, um, came on board in the last couple of years. So I think we kind of owe it to the public just to take this, um, on ourselves and figure it out. And that doesn't mean elimination of all, um, qualified volunteers who wish to continue, um, providing input. And I think if we give Mr. Carney a chance, my understanding from reading the, Mr. Curry's memo is that perhaps we can come up now with a plan on how to structure citizen input into this project. And hopefully, we can do our job as local representatives, continue to hear from the public, and have a, a robust, but hopefully in the unproductive, um, discussion that leads to a good outcome for everyone in terms of what the building looks like and how we get these buildings fixed up. So I just say that I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm not pessimistic, and I don't know that we need to keep dwelling on, um, how upset everyone was after the recent meeting with the building committee. I don't think that gets any of us anywhere. So I'd like to hear more from Mr. Carney about what he is proposing, and, um, and then see what we can do going forward.
I didn't say anything about anybody being upset, I'm just saying that we shouldn't be talking about people that aren't here.
No, I know. Well, and I, and so respectfully, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse there. We, we all were here, and it was uncomfortable and unfortunate. But I just think that, um, I, and I think Mr. Carney articulated this also. I'm grateful for all the work, and I think the work that you all did brought us to a logical point where we now should do the work, take responsibility for doing the work going forward.
I just want to point out the other side of the sticking up for people side of things, which is that I serve as a supervisor, but I also serve as a building, I own the building committee and have for several years now. It was very hard to watch my peers get up and work and not be able to support them in a way that I felt was appropriate, because they bring a lot of experience and passion and commitment to the project. And so while I understood, and you went on quite some length about how unprofessional and difficult that you thought that that was at the last meeting, um, it was very hard for me to sit here and watch that talent and walk down the stairs and know what it was going to cost us. So I just hope that as we share our sides of our stories, that we really appreciate what our volunteers bring to the table. And we can't all be everywhere for every meeting and understand everything that goes on. But I, I really think we should think twice before we, uh, speak ill of anyone, especially when they're not here to defend themselves.
I just want to be very clear that I have never spoken ill of anyone. I would never spoke, speak ill of anyone. I thanked the building committee, and I continue to, and I have had good discussions with folks on the building committee, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart.
But had I not interrupted you, you would have probably spoke ill of somebody.
That I, that I absolutely appreciate all of the work that the building committee has done. We are elected officials in local government.
Right, but.
What we're, I'm just gonna finish.
All right.
What we're supposed to be able to do is bring up an idea and debate that idea for good and bad with each other in public. That's our job. If that's not our job, we don't really have one. And if we can't do that, we're missing the mark.
That's what I've been asking for for months.
I don't want to get too far.
So I'm saying that, I just, I'm gonna finish, which is that I think that the building committee's done fantastic work. And my point behind what I was trying to offer at the last meeting was not to say we don't need a building committee. My point then, and I've changed my point since, I've changed my mind since then. My point then was the building committee should really just stick to the, uh, restoration of the buildings with the envelopes, and we just need to bring this other work stream over here. Since then, I've changed my mind a little bit, and I think that we should just move forward as a group, and I think it'll be more efficient. And this has nothing to do with, I am not blaming anybody for anything. I want to move on, and I want to work, and I think you guys have done a great job. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to authorize the county administrator to develop a scope of work for the historic building, for the envelopes, and to, uh, develop a, an RFP for an R and E, uh, an A and E team to move forward with the courthouse. That, that's just what I'd like to do, knowing that we're gonna have to just meet and talk about it.
So, but have, has anybody talked to Mr. Curry about the extra workload that he's gonna have on this now?
Well, that's just why we're here today. So Gary, you know, I, I, Gary, after the last meeting, I talked to Gary, and I said, hey, is this something that, you know, you've got some staff that you didn't have? Is this something you could do? And he said, we can absolutely talk about it, but that's why we're here today. I mean, this is the whole point of this, to me. All right, so, I mean, it's not a, a secret that I expressed frustration at an earlier building committee meeting. They were going in circles, and we needed to do something. Um, and I still feel that way. Um, and I think it, it's difficult sometimes when, um, maybe the committee didn't feel fully empowered, and so then there's a struggle of reaching too far, and then having something happen at this level where you're not supported, and then you potentially wasted time. Um, so as, as Mr. Carney stated, we do have additional staff now. I do have an experience in capital project delivery. And what we need to focus is on a capable, on, as our capable, competent architectural engineering partners. Um, the building committee went through the RFP process for the envelope, and, um, this board authorized award to, uh, Legacy and Glyveane Homes, uh, team. And so that part's done. What's left undone on that part is developing the scope of work for what that, uh, what that company's gonna do to facilitate the, um, the exterior envelope work. Uh, on the other side, for the courthouse, there's plenty of concepts have been developed at this point in time. Um, it doesn't sound like there's broad support for any of the concepts that have hit the table yet. So I think that we need to bring in, uh, a fresh AE team in. We've had one on contract for several years, their contract is coming to an end. We go to the market, find the best company suited to help us identify the concept that the board wants, and then drive that concept through completion. Uh, whatever it is, you, you still have to figure out that concept. And I, you know, professionally believe, uh, what I've heard from others, that it should be a standalone building, and it should include all of the players. Uh, but this, the information's gotta be developed in a way that the board of supervisors as a body comes to that conclusion, or a different conclusion, and then authorizes it to drive forward. Um, if we, if we don't bring on that A and E to take those next steps, we're really, there's, we're, we're just.
Doing nothing.
Sitting still. So I, I firmly believe that you have to put an RFP on the street to identify the best-suited A and E team for courthouses, recognizing everything that's been done to, to date, which is a ton of information for those firms to look at and understand where this body and community is coming from, uh, to present and, and be identified. And then ultimately, this board has, is empowered to award to whatever that consultant ends up being.
Okay, uh, second question, if you don't mind. All the building committee meetings were open to the public. Is this group that you're gonna be putting together or working by yourself, is that gonna be open to the public?
No, I'm not gonna invite the public into my office. Um, the, um, process to select an architectural engineering company would be closed, whether it be at the building committee or not part of a public body. Um, and there are proper exclusions through FOIA. There, if we went through, uh, the building committee route, and, and wouldn't be needed if it was a, a committee that I pulled together. So, no, I don't think there'll be the public involvement in the selection of the firm unless this board wants to have, uh, those architectural firms, um, come present at a meeting. have, uh, those architectural firms, um, come present at a meeting or something. They could, it's, it'd be bid offered, but it's an important project.
Now, not, not just the selection of the architect, but all along the process like we've been doing.
I think it, um, it's, at some point in time, the board of supervisors is going to have to identify the con- preferred concept. Uh, and, and then I think it's very dangerous for, um, the board to be picking up mortar colors and uh, getting into the finite details. We'll never get a project done if, if we do that.
You know, you guys always go to the extreme, some kind of extreme when I ask a question. I'm talking about taking the concept and developing it into the building.
I think it'll be iterative.
You're saying it's not gonna be open to the public.
There'll be iterative.
Like we have had. We've been accused of not getting the message out to the public and now we're going into a closed, a closed, uh, uh, process.
It would be iterative, as I think Mr. Carney suggested, Mr. Whitson suggested, there'd be monthly reports out to the board of supervisors and the public of where we are and decision points that need to be made. And, and hopefully those decision points, as guided by your selected or, you know, the ideal and your, your awarded AE, will, that professional in the courthouse development and design space will be able to place those critical design points in front of you in a timely manner to guide you through the process. Uh, and so, no, in between those points, I don't expect that I'll be holding court in my office and having everybody from the public coming to provide their two cents. It's just, and it's an impossible way to develop a courthouse project. Part of the reason I thought that it'd be useful to have a standing building commi- uh, building's agenda item was that the public then could rely on knowing that they could come every month at the same time and get an update where we're making decisions back. And it would be more straightforward in terms of the lengthiness of the process with its regularity.
The process that Mr. Curry just described is he would be making the decisions.
No, he'll bring them to, the way I'm hearing this is he'll bring the decisions that need to be made to this board at our monthly meeting. We'll make decisions and move forward. I mean, that's.
That's not what he said, though.
I think that is what I said, but.
Oh, no, you said that you would be basically holding court in your office and you'd be making reports back to us, but that doesn't mean that we would be involved in the processing. You're not involved in it. But you're interrupting me.
You're right.
So I'm, I'm talking to Mr. Curry for the public's benefit, and I'm trying to get down to the nitty gritty of this because I have heard this for the last three or four years that county administrators, when they put together a committee, they don't have to be open to the public. They don't have to tell anybody when they're talking about anything.
It's not a public body. It is not a public body and it's not like the building committee.
So, but, but people have stood up today and complained that maybe we didn't, as a building committee, get the information out there. And now they're gonna get less information, which is what I predicted a month ago.
You know, I don't know, to the extent to which the, um, two-hour building committee meetings have happened, uh, on a monthly basis, all the, um, all the run-up to those meetings has not happened in the public. There's been work by committee members, et cetera, along the way to develop information. The public hasn't been, you know, in their pocket during that entire time. This monthly process will then now be a report out to the board. Uh, but at the end of the day, I will do as the board directs me to do. If you want a building committee, we'll do a building committee. If you want to empower me to do certain things, I will do those things. If you wanna put limits on what I can and can't do, I will do those things up to those limits. But my recommendation is you gotta do something. Uh, if you don't, judges are gonna tell you what to do.
That's what we've been trying to do. We had the rug pulled out from under us in July, when the paper came out, we had three supervisors majority saying that they no longer wanted to work on a new courthouse. I couldn't even get a response from two supervisors, what was a good weekend, that they could come look at the balloon flying in the air. That was in May, April and May.
What I know is it's November and we need to look forward if we want to accomplish.
But it's not the building committee's fault. It's the majority's fault. It's trying to empower you to do work. That, that's gonna be basically behind closed doors.
I just, anyway, I just. The building committee never had minutes.
I'm sorry? We weren't required to keep minutes.
So I'd like to move to authorize the county administrator to develop a request for proposals for architectural and engineering support for the courthouse project. Can I make two motions in one or wrap this up?
Whatever you wanna do.
What is it?
Just add and.
And, uh, move to authorize the county administrator to develop the scope of work for historic building envelope restoration project task orders.
I will second your motion.
And I'd like to hear the motion again if we've got it. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, I'll move to authorize the county administrator to develop a request for proposals for architectural and engineering support for the courthouse project and move to authorize the county administrator to develop the scope of work for historic building envelope restoration project task orders.
Alright, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, I was just wondering if the county administrator will be working on those on his own or will be, he, will he be working through a committee of the county administrator, which is not subject to FOIA or anything of that nature?
I intend to work on these by myself. The, once the RFP is released, there are, there's a broader process of engagement on how to, um, consider the proposals that are received.
I'm, I'm amenable to the motion, but I do want an understanding that we are not empowering the county administrator to put together working groups that are not subject to FOIA.
So my, at, at the last meeting, my suggestion was, after I read the Supreme Court guidance, they have this icon that says, here's who should be your informal, you know, ping off of group, right? And what I suggested at that meeting was that Gary could literally, and they consist of constitutional officers, uh, judges, uh, you know, that it's an icon that you can just see who they suggest. And my, my suggestion at the last meeting was that Gary could just individually ask these people questions as he's want to do to gather the information to bring to us. Now, I do not envision you setting up some kind of meeting where nobody, none of us are allowed to attend or there's some, I, I don't know, maybe that's what you're envisioning, but that's not what I'm suggesting. I, I was just suggesting that the Supreme Court says, here's these people that you can use for guidance.
Right, and they were used for guidance at one point. They were asked questions in regards to their space needs. And then there was the recent meeting on September 11th in order to revision, to revisit those details. But I, I wanna be very specific, if I vote for this, that we are perfectly fine with the county administrator just having discussions with stakeholders. But what we are not fine with is county administrator working groups that are not subject to FOIA.
Now, if I could interject, you and several other supervisors have talked about this working group. You're wasting their time. You're wasting the judge's time. You're wasting the clerk's time if you don't even know if you're gonna have a separate building or an addition. That's time of theirs that you're wasting. Their, their, their input, you know, is like traffic flow and whether they have, uh, this type of, uh, how the cubicles are arranged, things of, of that nature. You got, you haven't ever got that far yet. That's why we never really had a discussion with them uh, past the initial one.
Cubicles?
So, you, the people that use the building are the people that you get the input from. That, like I said, traffic flow inside the building, things of that nature. If you don't know whether you're gonna have an addition back here or a separate building over there, you're wasting the judge's time. And you're looking at me with this, this blank expression because you didn't understand that, Mr. Carney.
I think we have a motion on the table.
No, we're still in discussion. I'm trying, this, see, this is how messed up this is.
Know that your conversation is part of that motion.
I'd ju- I'd like to clarify, maybe, the, the two, the two sentences of the motions that were the recommended actions in the board packet, get us to task orders for design of the envelope work and get us to a request for proposals for the A and E work for courthouse project. Uh, it doesn't bring us to selection of the AE, an award of the architectural engineering firm, award of them, and then the development of that design. Those are future steps, but can we at least get an RFP on the street seeking the best and brightest in this space to help us with this problem and guide us through all these challenges that, that are complex and involve many people? And I think that's the only thing that's being requested right now. And if we can get this competent expert to do that, they can help guide you through this complex process, which has vexed many boards over time. And you will have their support to bring it along.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm opposed because I see where this is going.
Thank you, Van. I didn't realize it was on board docs. I thought you were reading something you had written. Sorry.
That brings us to F1.
Yes, thank you. You wanna take a quick recess?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Five minutes?
So will we have an update next month on the agenda on this side?
Uh, uh, this is really just an update, uh, brought to you last month that there's, uh, library board, trustees vacancy coming up on December 31st. Uh, you made one appointment last month. Uh, there's a notice that's running the newspaper this week and next week stating, uh, or requesting people to provide their applications to my office by the, um, November 28th, I think. And with the expectation an award or an appointment would be made at the December meeting. Actually, uh, application showed up on my desk today while I was at lunch, so um, that, the name was very familiar. It was a person that just called about a telephone issue. So maybe we'll get more. Um, we'll see. The second appointment item is, um, regarding the Region 9, uh, VASAP Executive Board. The board of supervisors apparently has had an appointee to this body for a very long time in Mr. Frank Reynolds. Uh, the, the executive director, who's relatively new, reached out to us and suggested that the board should have a second appointee, um, to fill in if there are attendance issues. So we always have a representation and also share the bylaws that suggest that term should be limited to three years. I think the current term is like 20 something years. So, uh, staff discussed this internally and through the sheriff, um, suggested Lieutenant Dotson be appointed to this body. And, uh, Mr. Reynolds indicated he was, in, uh, had continued interest to serve. And that being the case, it's our recommendation that the board appoint both of them to a three-year term. And then we'll add this to our tracking list and keep up with it every three years.
Would you like, Golly, to go ahead and have a motion today?
Yeah, uh, yes.
I would like to make a motion then that we go ahead and reappoint Frank Reynolds to VASAP uh, and thank him for his, uh, years of service and his willingness to continue to do so. And then I would, uh, further make the motion that we, uh, appoint Lieutenant Cody Dotson to fill the second, um, vacancy at VASAP and thank him for his willingness to serve. I'm sure he'll be very capable and a great asset.
Can you just confirm that three years is acceptable?
Yes, sir.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we need to waive all formalities?
Uh, yeah, probably waive informalities.
Wait, are we waiving formalities or informalities?
Well, we waive informalities. If they're infor- infirm, then I guess we, we are saying, your policy, at the end of the policy, it says, your policy says we're gonna take all these steps to, um, appoint to different bodies. And then the last sentence says, you can waive those if you want to.
So those are formalities?
Well, infor- waiving any informals that might have taken, might have occurred relative to.
The formalities that otherwise would have been required. Thank goodness. I, cause I didn't.
Whatever it is, I'll waive it. How's that?
No, but, so.
Whatever vernacular you.
We're saying, don't worry about the informalities. We're good with this appointment on its face.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll amend my.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
See if you're paying attention.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
We used to deal with a certain type of paint and we always thought it was funny that the can of paint said on it, non-inflammable.
Oh, my God. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, it was a, just a running joke with the supply house, you know, we say, give us a can of that non-inflammable paint. And it said it right on there in big red letters, non-inflammable.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
Well, we know what we're gonna waive from now on, so.
I'm prone to say I are an engineer, so you guys pick up the wording as necessary.
I, yeah, I, I.
We're on to old business, uh, number two, new commercial activity, Mr. Whitson.
Yeah, I actually finally will validate the importance of the standing agenda item. So, um, I really, first of all, um, I wanna say how great the In-N-Out Washington is for our local economy. I believe it's the largest private employer. The sales tax, tax revenue that we see in the county coffers on an ongoing basis only continues to increase in part due to the inn's increase in revenue stream. And while the meals and lodging tax revenue remains in the town, the sales tax revenue is significant and we should never overlook the importance of that to diversification of our revenue sources, um, in a, in a positive way that hopefully keeps pressure off of our local property owners. All that said, um, I placed this standing agenda item some months ago with the, with the anticipation that the proposed expansion of the inn would bring with it, some challenges for our community. And I will say that, um, the last week or two, um, navigating the town around the In-N-Out Washington has been difficult. And I also understand that there, uh, was an incident, um, very recently, perhaps even, uh, in the last couple of days where someone, a pedestrian was injured near the inn, um, by a vehicle, um, striking them. And a couple of practical things that, um, I took on with, um, Virginia Department of Transportation, the, uh, and I mentioned it before, the placement of no parking signs at the corner of 622 and, and Main Street, Harris Hollow Road. Those parking signs are, um, helpful, but are often ignored. Um, and increasingly, I'm seeing more and more delivery trucks that park right in Main Street. I took a photo the other day of one and you had a delivery truck right in the, in the main lane on Main Street. And then you had staff walking back and forth and tourists walking back and forth across the road. It's dangerous. And I think that the accident that I heard had happened the last couple of days only underscores the fact that we've got to get this under control. To that end, I just wanna give you all a heads up that I will, I'm going to request, um, that VDOT paint those no parking areas for starters. And then number two, the, uh, in a little Washington, after the departure of general manager Bob Fast as a new general manager, and I intend to speak with him specifically about, um, the expectation for the completion of the inn's project out on 211 across from the Quickie Mart and the extent to which, as has been rumored, that that facility will absorb some of the parking and, and also delivery traffic that it's creating on the safe conditions in the town. It's becoming an untenable situation and I do not at for a second wanna put a wet blanket on, on the inn's activities, but I think it is something we all need to keep an eye on because it's, uh, the town is really, um, I think becoming more and more congested, which sounds odd in a county of 7,300 people without a traffic light, but in fact, it has happened. It has happened. And, um, I, I see it as only getting worse. And I believe that, uh, Patrick O'Connell and his general manager want to do the right thing in this regard. Um, and so I, um, just wanna let you all know that I will, I will take the lead in speaking with them about cleaning things up. And hopefully the project out on 211 will, um, take, take a lot of that parking pressure and maybe some of the dry goods delivery pressure off of the town streets, so.
No question. With the town being a separate entity, our parking regulations or ordinance doesn't affect them, right?
Um, that's a good question for our, our deputies, um, but I do understand that, um, uh, state police have been writing, um, citations for cars that are, are parked in no parking zones in the town. Um, those are state, those are still state highways, I believe.
Well, they're all state highways, yeah.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that recently that, uh, one of our state troopers had been taking vehicles. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that's whatever.
If they're in the street, but I mean, if we have no parking signs in certain areas, then that may be, you know, is that a county regulation or does, does the town have their own?
We'll have to look into it. Uh, and as much as the town is not one of the towns or cities who takes on their own road maintenance, I, I imagine it's very similar to how it would involve us, which is, uh, to beholden on VDOT and performing, generally they would perform a study and, and only authorize a sign to be put up after a study, which is what happened at Harris Hollow. So I don't know as far as enforcement, what our current code ordinance says, and I don't think Mr. Goff is up on our current parking code either.
What parking code?
Right.
We, we have one of some sort. It may not be very good, but I mean, about six years ago, though, it was a town that had to vote to abandon that sub-street so that they could give it to the inn.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. And I do recall portions of our code that identify certain private roads that are subject to being, um, that identify certain private roads that are subject to being enforced by law enforcement. I just don't know how the interplay works with the town and that can be an action item for us to figure out with the sheriff.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's, you, you raise a really good question and I think if, in terms of trying to figure out from a practical standpoint, how to just relieve delivery and parking pressure from the town, logically, we should also figure out from an enforcement perspective with whom that authority would rest. And I'm happy, I'm happy to dig into that as well.
Yeah, I'm like you, I don't want to, you know, inflict any penalties of some sort on a, on a business that's ongoing and bringing in revenue for the town, but at the same time, people have to get in and out of town.
Yeah, and, and our hay farmers, cow farmers and people and horse people with trailers, I keep hearing it, like it is so hard to get through town. And, and I, and I did make the point at a town council meeting that while the expansion plans are impressive and exciting, we can't forget about people who make a living here and are, are traveling with really large trailers and vehicles. And so that was really my motivation to kind of block off that intersection with no parking areas. There's also a fire hydrant there that needs to be striped because that's another hazard. I mean, that's become a parking spot and it's because the staff has increased, visitors to the INN has, that number has increased. And I think that it's really getting to the, a critical point where it's got to be better managed. And again, I, yeah, I think you and I agree, we don't, we don't want to be too persnickety, but I think reasonable measures to keep the town flowing safely, especially now that there has been an accident, is important. So I'll look into the enforcement side perhaps with Mr. Curry, Mr. Goff and the sheriff. But I did hear through the grapevine that a state trooper, I thought, wrote a citation. Maybe Mr. Goff would know that before me if that's true or could be true.
It's a function of whether there's a safety concern with a vehicle in the roadway, whether there's, it's signed or not.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
I'll work on that.
All right, moving into the broadband project update, I would like to call the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority to order.
Come on, Ms....
You can have my seat if you want.
Pull up a chair.
And just to let everyone know, Sharon Pendak is on Zoom, should we have any legal concerns or questions? Yeah, come on.
So this is on the board's agenda because it came up at earlier meeting and there was a request for representatives to attend from All Points Broadband or N S Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission. I did extend that request. All points rather quickly, let me know if they were not available. Did not get a response, positive or negative, from the Regional Commission. Based on that, I did set up meetings with All Points, with REC and then Ms. Don Hey and I attended the regional quarterly update meeting that was held at the Regional Commission's offices. I provided an update and packet, but maybe before we get to that, the broadband authority might want to take care of some of their business. And you have minutes from your last meeting posted and you have financial information posted. So if you're inclined to manage some of those things, then we can move them out of the way and then we can talk about the update.
That makes good sense.
Do you have a, an exact figure of what the county has paid Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission?
I, I just earlier this morning received the financial update that had that and I didn't have time to push it out, I don't think, maybe I did.
No.
But it's, the next payment is due January 1. I've opened up dialogue with Path Foundation, that's their next cycle. So they're working on that to make sure their next $500,000 is provided. But unfortunately, I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the recollection of how many quarters this has been out of how many quarters. Sorry.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe you could forward something because I asked this question like a month ago too.
Well, the, we get the monthly update and I pass those along. I can tell you by quickly glancing at that, that it included a copy of the bank statement for your account and it showed the amount of money, I don't recall what it, what it said. I was thinking, I probably need to redact the account number off of that before I forward it on.
I just have a really difficult time knowing that we've given this group over $4 million and we can't get them to come to a meeting.
I can tell you that Mr. Davis sees himself as a contractual facilitator and not otherwise involved in the project. I would like them to be, have a more active role. I can understand how they feel like they're in an awkward spot where All Points is driving the bus for sure and the counties are all clear passengers and it makes the commission's position a little bit confusing. But I, I do agree that they're contractually involved, they should be engaged.
It looks like 9:30, the end balance on our deposits was basically 3.6 million. And so then there's another almost 600,000, so we're at like 4.1, I think, now with deposits.
Those deposits are held with, in our separate bank account for Rappahannock County because Northern Shandau Valley is the custodian. And those are only paid to All Points Broadband after, this is pursuant to the fiscal agent agreement, after All Points completes a milestone, submits the paperwork to the state to get paid from the VODI grant for that milestone. And then once that happens, it triggers the match from the localities and that's when the localities would pay All Points after they get paid from the state.
And then...
None of that has been paid yet.
Did we ever get clarification on what happens with the interest? Because it's, it's over $40,000 in interest.
We were told early on that we couldn't collect interest and now we are collecting interest. So we can clarify that. I think they, it became obvious that the interest rates are getting higher and that interest is going to be a real topic of conversation.
I had the same question.
It's, it's real money now.
And it's, and I think that's ultimately why they separated into multiple accounts.
And we'll probably, my guess is if, I assume there is nothing that would preclude us from retaining that revenue ourselves, just as we would with the money in, in our general fund. And, but, I mean, at the same time, we also have, whatever's earned will, would at some later date, assuming we keep, that interest revenue would have to be dispersed to the, the foundation and private entities.
If our, if our betting, I would say our final payment will be reduced, but I, I don't know.
Right.
There's nothing in writing though to clarify any of that or even speak specifically to it.
It's a good question, I think it's absolutely valid line of inquiry.
Yeah, but that should have been asked a long time ago, so.
Well, we did ask about interest and we were told we couldn't get it. Something changed and I don't know if it was at the state level or what.
I doubt that that's going to change. If that started out like that, I doubt it's going to change.
Well, let's find out.
We'll find out.
It's, it's a good question.
Can I get a motion to approve the finances and minutes, I guess separately?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the...
What is it, treasurer's report? Is that specifically what?
I usually don't request for approval of the report.
Oh, that's right.
We're just going to do the minutes.
Meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the July broadband authority meeting minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just to be clear, that's an action of the RCBA.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Before I forget, I got one of these from APB.
Yes.
Did anybody else?
I got, I got one too.
Did you guys get one?
Yeah.
And I, I pulled up with that.
We didn't get them in our area.
And I asked, is this the notice? Because we were told we're getting...
No.
We, I know not, but it's kind of confusing when we're told that we're going to be getting a communication from All Points. It's a postcard in the mail.
Well, it refers to the later, I think in here it doesn't, I read it the other day. Van, you want to just read it?
Truth be told, All Points didn't really want to send something out at this time and the counties on the quarterly call two meetings ago said, do our citizens want to know what's going on?
Yep.
So the big, big thing it says is Rappahannock County has partnered with All Points Broadband to bring you fiber, to bring you fiber broadband. Coming soon, blazing fast fiber. Pre-register today at apfiber.com, you can do, scan the QR code, which I scanned and it told me that I had already entered my information, so.
But your location is, is included.
You should not receive this if you're a Comcast customer, for example. Right, and so, Mr. Fraser, you live in a Comcast area.
Right.
So maybe that's why you didn't get one.
But there's people in our area that don't, don't have Comcast and I guess are considered, but they didn't get that.
Maybe, oh, so they didn't get one of these?
I didn't get one and none of my neighbors got one that don't have Comcast.
And, and that is a good segue into the presentation of the memo. First, I want to bring up...
I just wanted to comment, I mean, I'm glad we heard something. I don't think a postcard is maybe the most effective means of communication. And I, I kind of take issue with the use of the word soon on the postcard because I, I don't think by most folks' definition of the word soon, it's going to be here soon. And to Ms. Bond's point, we were told that a postcard to this effect would hit people's mailboxes 90 to 100 days before rollout and availability of the service in their area. And I just am very concerned that we've set an expectation which we will not be able to deliver, which is not where I want to live.
Just to be very clear, it does not say soon anywhere on here.
Oh, I thought you said soon when you read it.
It's a song.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, coming soon, yeah.
And I, I also kind of wonder about, I, I don't know if I would have guaranteed blazing fast because that kind of remains to be seen with implementation too. But I think soon is, is not a word that I would have used.
But I think, I think the point is that we, we signed a contract with a certain projected timeline and that, that hasn't changed. So, but I get your point about this postcard, but this isn't the, this isn't the pre, pre 90-day, we're ready to do it.
And I think it's another way just to make sure everybody's signed up that wants it.
They could have focused more on the make-ready bottom left-hand corner. We're here now and this is a journey to this nice picture on the far right, bottom right.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith makes a good point that they're managing expectations is something that even back in the days of the broadband committee we talked about, there's a lot of chitter chatter on the social media and a lot of misinformation. We may understand this process here because we've worked very closely with it, but social media can get an idea and run with it and it's the wrong idea. So that's why I think it's important to bring up this is not that 90-day notice, a postcard, because it could be confused with that.
And to still ask people to go to the, the website to register your address if you have not done so.
So the, the board docs narrative continues to include the link to the DHCT site, which I just pulled up and that's a general tracking of the project. You can see no fiber mileage included, no locations served at this point in time. But the make-ready process, you can see identified as in progress as well as quality assurance, quality control, all the others not started yet.
And I will say that I had, I was sitting, sitting in my office at home one afternoon and Timmins Engineering, which is the sub that's doing a lot of the make-ready in-field verification of their on paper, of All Points on paper design. They're, they're on my property and up and down my road. So, I mean, I think there has, there has been a presence of All Point Broadband subcontract, engineering sub in the county and I've seen that firsthand, so, I mean, things are happening.
So if I could report out then from my one-on-one meetings with All Points and REC and then the quarterly meeting, the vehicle you saw from Timmins was part of the design write-out, preliminary design write-out, which is complete in this county, which means, as I noted here in this letter, they have developed their preliminary design and had it inspected by I to make sure it didn't have any major flaws on the pathways. So they were driving up in your area, up in here somewhere
Right, correct.
to see where the lines were crossing, roads and creeks and, and whatnot, to see if there are any fatal flaws, if you will. Still very preliminary design. The next process of that design is, is an intense look at all of the poles that need to be used along the electrical paths. And so you see some of these routes and they do not follow roads, they follow electrical path, electrical line paths, which sometimes coexist with roads. And so they'll be looking at every pole in the make-ready process. This has started in other counties already, has not started here yet. Looking at the poles, making sure they're tall enough, making sure that the, there's enough room below the electrical area with enough separation for the data lines to be placed and still be far enough, high enough above the ground, both at the pole and between poles.
Yeah.
And if, if they're not going to be high enough above ground, then they might have to move things around on the pole or replace the pole, possibly put a pole between poles to affect that catenary curve between them. In addition, there might be a need to relocate the route because of something when that, when that comes up. Or they might find that the pole's just fine because maybe it was replaced relatively recently. So in this image here, I know it's not great to see, but it is in board docs. You see three different colors. Those are their preliminary fiber service areas, FSA's. So the county's broken into three fiber service areas. And then each of those would feed back to one of these green cabinets, which is a larger cabinet. If you remember one of my earlier presentations, when we went to visit Northern Neck in Richmond County, there was this kind of beige cabinet on the ground, that'd be that powered cabinet. These other blocks are other types of cabinets or whatever that might be on poles or on the ground. All this subject to change, all preliminary. So you can see, obviously in the heart of the park, there's no fiber lines. But then interesting, down Rolling Road, it actually follows the property line around down Nethers and up Moon Road here rather than, you know, we would, if we were going to drive there, we'd come all the way to here and drive down Nethers Road. But that's not the best way to get there by power lines. Even though they're in the middle of nowhere, they're still just sort of the different way. Even in some of the areas that we know are either Comcast or, for whatever reason, were left out of the VODI area because they're close to Comcast, they do, they are showing some fiber in those areas and that will expand through the second grant that they told us that they will be seeking. When we, when I spoke to them one-on-one, they weren't sure if it would be VODI grant or a BEED grant. And at the regional meeting, they told us BEED grant. And that is based on FCC listing of who is eligible for that. Anybody who's in the VODI area is not eligible. And then people who definitely have Comcast are not going to be eligible. But you can see this is a universe of eligible locations in the county, which largely follows our Comcast footprint, is outside of the VODI area. Comcast will be able to challenge these locations before the grant application. It's backwards from the VODI program. And so they will claim their customers and who they can service, maybe they could be served today, but they've chosen not to be on the system. You can see in Mr. Fraser's area, all of these people that probably didn't get mailers, they're in the BEED process, all the way down here in the corner. And then Indigo Lane, Siskel Lane, those are areas that, that we pointed out, they, they left off of their VODI polygon and then up along 211 and around Washington, they even got Grandview Road. All those folks have Comcast, they'll, they'll get challenged away. And then up through Flint Hill and, and Proximal 2, 522, those folks that are, if you're more than 200 feet off the Comcast line, Comcast is going to charge you a special construction charge. So Comcast is not likely to challenge those locations and they'll be able to fall into the BEED grant. All points reiterated, they will be, no local match for the BEED grant.
What was the dollar amount attached to that grant for those additional 500 locations?
It's not developed yet. The state received, I think, $1.48 billion in BEED grant money. And so everybody across the state... And so everybody across the state who hasn't been successful in VODI through the cares and extra money, and then the cares this year is only forty or fifty million, or, uh, the VODI's only forty or fifty million this year, they'll be going after this BEAT money.
Wow.
Um, given, uh, the metrics are similar to VODI, but not exactly the same. And as I explained, the challenge process is a little bit different. Another big difference is who's served and not served or underserved for the VODI program. It was a twenty-five-three, if you have wired twenty-five megabit down, three up, you're served, but for BEAT, it has to be existing a hundred down, twenty up, so it's a higher threshold. Comcast should be able to hit that for most of their people, but nobody else will be able to in our, in our area, so basically.
Comcast for the desk twenty up?
I think they claim to, and they're working hard to make sure they can back it up. Um, you know, Comcast knows that you can buy it today.
I think this, this is good news generally.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's taking out, it seems like it's removing sort of that potential foggy area.
So we'll all feel a lot more comfortable when the BEAT grant package is put together, submitted and awarded. Uh, the fact that there's, um, no local money, I think, is, is great and they, All Points will be balancing the ask like they did for VODI, uh, in a way that they have a winning proposal.
Um, is the hun, can you remind me, is the hundred twenty, uh, requirement a federal requirement or state requirement?
It's attached to the BEAT money, so it's a federal requirement.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And is that the federal requirement? I thought it was actually higher.
That's atta, attached to the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Act.
Okay, gotcha.
And so that's the marker of what is served.
Okay.
BEAT also has, and this shouldn't come into our community, uh, required to identify, um, a cost threshold, uh, like per passing that, above which it doesn't make sense to do a wired connection, um, because you're around the top of a mountain, you're far away, one person, it takes five miles or something like that. And, and that would, once you pass that threshold, then you would be allowed to serve it some other way, Starlink or something. All of ours are along, all of ours that are left over are along the corridors, which don't fall into that category.
Right. So in those service areas, it's, um, CenturyLink Comcast, is that right?
CenturyLink Verizon, CenturyLink can, and Verizon DSL who can't do twenty up. Uh, so it's basically Comcast is the only provider. And so Comcast could apply for this money as well.
Uh-huh.
And they might go into the marketplace and they might cl, be able to show that, uh, um.
Interesting.
That, you know, they should get money because they can provide a hundred twenty and they can expand their folks.
So in Sperryville, the, um, uh, Ms. Smith, do you, do you know, does Sperryville have, it has Verizon and Comcast?
There are some areas that have Verizon, um, like I think Thornton Gap.
But that would be DSL, there's a few people that have DSL.
It's, it's not good service, it's very unreliable.
But those people might get picked up by the BEAT.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, or if they're not already in the body.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
But if you're along 211 or 520, well, 211 or in Sperryville proper.
Yeah.
Then you could probably get Comcast without a special construction charge.
Okay.
And they run up some of the side roads, but not all the long driveways. And those long driveways, if they're not in the VODI polygon, they would be eligible for the BEAT. And I didn't, I wrote, but I had mentioned all these different colors, it's because the feds decided the way they're going to do this is by zip code coding, ZCTAs, and so that's how that's, they've got to put together the packages.
And this does not apply to wireless? They can, what, T-Mobile can't, uh, uh?
No.
Challenge this?
No, I don't think so.
Because you can get T-Mobile hotspots that give way more than one twenty.
Yeah, interesting, I was near your spot the other day and I couldn't get hardly anything because I think it was saturated.
Huh.
Um, which, the more and more people that jump on one of these cell sites, it becomes saturated, or even, uh, Starlink, you start spreading that bandwidth among everybody. And so you can't have three thousand people on it.
Right.
But you can have your outliers be complementary to something that is wired.
And I'll note that Starlink is increasingly getting less and less reliable. I've noticed that, I think, in the last three or four months. So I don't know, it's.
They keep throwing out more satellites and so that combats that.
Right.
So, uh, I did include in this memo the, kind of the listing of the next steps, um, and who's responsible. Uh, All Points went through this in their quarterly presentation, have not received a copy of that yet. Um, but this is the general process and how it will work. The next major step for us is the make-ready design work by All Points and their contractors, looking at all those poles, then submitting batches of those pole corrections to REC, so REC and their contractors can make the pole changes. Once all the poles are tall enough, spaced right, then they can actually string fiber. Again, July twenty twenty-five, um, is the deadline and All Points believes the runway for BEAT would be such that that money would come onboard while the VODI project is happening and it would all just kind of happen together.
Interesting. Maybe you already addressed this and excuse me if you did, um, when would that BEAT money come through and what is the deadline for that application?
Uh, the, the, I don't, that was in the, in the presentation that we received quarterly and, um, I asked the question, are we going to get a copy of this presentation? The answer was yes. I didn't write anything down of the details and I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
So I don't know. I think, uh, it's coming up in the next few months, but it hasn't been released yet. There was a step, each state rolls through BEAT at a different cycle based on their submission. Virginia was one of the first states to submit the plan to the feds. And so they're waiting for the feds to finish kind of their process and kick it back. That starts a challenge window to, for the incumbents to challenge out and claim these dots as their own.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, once that is finished, which is a thirty-day window, then the, what's left standing would then be bid on by the different providers.
Mm-hmm.
And if there are any dots left after people bid, we're told that the, the feds will then go out and pick these other providers and say, you know, we want you to do this. Hopefully that doesn't happen in our case, given our relationships, but we'll find out. Like, for example, on, uh, Utown Road, or, um, Sub Ponds Road, there's Comcast on either end, but not the middle. It's really, it's a bizarre setup.
Doesn't make any sense.
Um, because it's fed from both ends.
Right.
Um, and so I tried to get Comcast engaged in that, actually I have another call in a couple of days on that. Um, but, you know, we'll see, maybe Comcast will bid on that and get some BEAT money, or maybe All Points will, um, try to do that. They don't show a lot of fiber right now in that area, so.
They did say that Virginia is trying to be the first to finish everything. It's really a push to be able to say that you're the, the number one state for fiber or something, I don't know.
The relative funding that Virginia got is very high.
I just want to look at the, um, on page three, the wording regarding installation costs, and this has been troubling me since we, we got word that there will be special, um, additional installation costs, yeah, by the foot or the yard or whatever it was. And, and regardless of, of how low it is, I, I have to say that that was not what I understood to be the case when Mr. Carr came and spoke to us. And it is not the, what I understand to be the case when I read that part of the agreement.
You talking about the paragraph identified as number six?
Right, without limitation.
So, uh, once fi, uh, once service becomes available at a particular location, not, not somewhere in the whole county, there's, you have twelve months to sign up and get your one ninety-nine. And if you don't do it within that twelve months, there is not clarity on what the reasonable, unreasonable per-foot cost is.
But I, I thought we had just heard that they would deliver, not necessarily where you wanted them to deliver your connection to, but they would deliver it to somewhere on the property.
Oh, no, no, no.
And then there would be an additional, that wasn't what we heard?
We, uh, they will, they will provide it to the side of the house, and we actually saw this happening in, uh, in the, in the Northern Neck. Uh, I should have stated, I forgot. I did reach out to, uh, Latrell Tadlock, who's the county administrator in Northumberland, to ask him how things are going. My old contact in Richmond County, uh, left the county, so I picked a different one. And, uh, Latrell told me that, uh, they were a little behind, but it's, it's going very well right now. Um, they're making connections to homes. Uh, when we went to Richmond County, we, we actually drove around and we saw where the fiber was on the pole and then they showed us where it went down the pole and went over to the side of the house, and on the side of the house, there's a little box, um, which kind of like it would be for cable. Um, so that's all coming and where there's some confusion, I think, is, um, if I have overhead electrical service to my house, All Points has said you're going to have overhead electric, overhead fiber service to your house on that route. Uh, but if you have buried service to your house from some point, they've said that you would have buried service. Now, I don't know if they would take the same exact route as the electric, it might depend on what the nearest pole is. It's probably the same pole, the nearest pole's probably the pole that you get your electric from, but no guarantee. And then there's a few people who have no electric service to their house and they're off-grid and, and that's a real outlier of how you're going to get to them. And I think the answer is, I don't know, we'll have to figure that out because it's a huge outlier compared to how we've thought about this project.
But yeah, the hundred, the hundred and ninety-nine was for the, the connection into your house. And I asked the, the Timmins, um, uh, field engineer and he, he was like, well, you're ha, I mean, I, he said, your power line comes from that pole underground to the side of your house and that's what they'll follow. So, I mean, that's kind of the plan and what they told us before. So I think the idea is to incentivize people to, to, uh, sign up within a year so you don't face a higher installation cost, particularly if you have a long drop or.
So if the Board of Supervisors and Broadband Authority, it's, you know, and, and anybody in the community that's incumbent on us, that when it is declared available at a particular location and you get your ninety-day, uh, postcard, or you don't get your ninety-day postcard, that we are beating the drum saying it's available in these areas and then whether the commu, whether we want to do additional outreach at that time in addition to anything All Points is doing. At that point, the infrastructure's in place and All Points only makes money if they can sell service. Uh, so it's in their best interest, fortunately, and ours, to, for the fiber to actually make it from the road to the house. So if it doesn't, they don't get their fifty-nine dollars a month or whatever service level somebody picked.
Yeah.
Uh, but we want to make sure people know it and definitely know it within twelve months.
Well, I guess that, that takes you back to the postcard, is that I hope people don't sort of have fatigue from getting correspondence, promising them something soon and then no result, and now they're going to get another something soon.
Right.
And they've just heard that a year and a half ago and they don't respond because they already responded.
Yeah, that, that was the All Points argument. The, the chorus from all the counties was send something out.
It, but it's sort of a follow-up question that that is, has All Points, um, identified the way in which the homeowner is notified of the start date of that twelve months?
So what they did say is that the best way for them to be able to reach potent, uh, future customers is by those customers going to apbfiber.com and registering their interest and also registering the contact paths through which they want to be notified. So if you go to that process and you put your name and your phone number and your email address, then they have that in their database and can use that to reach you at that time.
And they'll tell you when this is your, your, the clock is starting to run.
Well, you know, I've heard, uh, I've heard from others that it's, it could be smoother and maybe, you know, in, in the Northern Neck, the process of when it is available, not available, and, um, I think they're still working that out.
Yeah.
And I think we can help them and I think they'll help themselves by then. Um, but absolutely, we need to make sure as those fiber service areas are turned on, um, that we are blasting to the world that it's, now is the time to absolutely go to AllPoints Fiber, uh, apbfiber.com and register your interest, make sure your contact information is in there and updated. Because it might have changed in the three years.
Right.
That the contract has been active or the years preceding when the contract was a maybe.
Um, I had a constituent inquire about the rate card. They didn't men, did they mention anything or?
Uh, there's nothing changed. It's still the fifty-nine, it's guaranteed for the life of the system, which is, you know.
Right, oh, that was the question with the other ones going up, what did they say? By?
CPI or something.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So if you want to.
But that fifty-nine, okay, yeah, okay, that's what it was, yep. That's for fifty and fifty, right?
Yeah. Which is faster than most.
But if you want more, you can get more.
It's way faster than what I have.
Any other questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I, I have a question, um, in it.
Or, or recording.
Sort of related to this. In the interest of managing the misinformation which, uh, came out last month over the dispute between APB and REC over the rates for the poles, it fomented the comments that this is spelling the destruction of the, or disintegration of this whole arrangement and APB isn't going to follow them and so forth. Do we have any other information that could be addressed to whether this increase in cost for the usage of the poles for APB is going to affect either the rate sale charge, their ability to complete the fiber install by July twenty-fifth, or any impact on the county of additional?
Sure, so I think there, there's two different things that came up in, in those correspondence. Uh, one was the use of REC installed fibers middle mile.
Right.
REC right now has fiber running up 522 corridor to Sperryville, then along 211, 522, Macy's corridor up to Flint Hill through Eileen, up, um, up to Chester Gap and then out.
That's completed.
That's done. So part one of that conversation was what are the costs that REC will charge All Points and anybody to lease their fiber? They installed two hundred and eighty-eight strands of fiber, don't need them all for their substation work. What is the rate that REC will charge? And so All Points, uh, apparently was not impressed with the rates that REC is currently saying they're going to charge. And REC basically said, we've already got all these blue lines on the map, we're just going to have to have higher count fiber on some of these blue line roads. Okay, so the incremental cost there is extra count fiber is installed as opposed to, uh, you know, designed for whoever, whatever customers are in that area.
That is the dark fiber that we talked about?
Yeah, well, dark fiber is just in place before you shine light through one into the other, send data, right? So, um, so that's part A. Uh, and All Points, pretty much in the quarterly meeting, said, we're just going to fatten up these blue lines and use them. It's, it makes more sense financially, long-term for the project if we just use our own, at least from REC at the rates they want to charge. The second part of that, um, discussion was regarding the processes, uh, and methods through which poles are analyzed to determine whether they're acceptable. And, um, there was a false start with the wrong, um, standard being shared and I think they've gotten through that. And, and now more poles have to be reviewed in, in a higher level detail. And so that is the extra work that needs to be done. It doesn't necessarily mean, mean that more poles need to be replaced or lines need to be moved, it's just more poles need a deeper engineering dive than would have other, that they thought had to happen. Uh, so that's just part of the process and the day we were in the quarterly meeting, they were talking about being in the field with REC, people working all that out.
And REC was in the meeting?
Yes.
The quarterly meetings, they were present?
Uh, I didn't, I did meet with Mr. Hira and Mr. Ponton and, um, I forget Lindsey's last name.
I can't remember.
Their government affairs person. And so they, they sent, um, their top folks to talk about the project and their message to me was, they're ready with the fleet of contractors to fix poles and soon as they get the batches of work from All Points.
And, and all the funding structure that we've been talking about so far is not going to change?
Correct.
Okay, good, that's, that's the, the point, I think, hopefully that social media will be.
Yeah, what's not going to happen, apparently, is All Points is not going to lease fiber from REC.
Yeah.
But they have all these blue lines anyways.
And one bonus on this is the people that we've heard from that have the large tractors that are barely going under the electric lines, this is going to take care of that too, which will be very nice.
There is a fringe benefit of, if there are substan, of substandard electrical poles in the field, along these blue lines, they're going to be addressed and it's a two-for-one, you get your electric carton at the same time as you get fiber strong, so that's good.
That's good.
So.
Anything else?
That's there for your detailed reading at any time.
It's a good report.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
The broadband authority.
I'll, I'll move that we adjourn the broadband authority meeting.
But I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
Good questions.
All right, where are we? Did that?
All right, that takes us to H1?
Yes.
You still, you still.
Is that Ms. Bond?
Yeah, maybe, she's paying attention.
Hmm?
Always.
Always.
So during the recent reconvene, general assembly session and the adopted budget that resulted from that, the state, um, has, has included in its budget a two percent that resulted from that, the state has included in its budget a 2% raise effective December 1 for all state responsible local employees, so those employees in the constitutional offices, as well as the registrar's office and social services. We shared with you the cost of that and the fact that that was in the budget, in the state's budget, as part of the contemplation of the compensation adjustment that you adopted at last month's meeting. And so, I'm just here today to clarify whether it's the board's intent and desire to move ahead with that specific 2% for all employees across the board at this point. The net cost is $52,000. That can be afforded within the existing budget this year. We do, we will need to do a supplemental appropriation to include the additional money that's coming from the state to help fund this and move some between departments. And that supplemental appropriation will be part of your agenda item on December 4th.
This was factored into the tables that Bonnie presented to you at the earlier meeting about the compensation plan, and she showed you the couple of columns, and then we would be, I think, $3,000 under or whatever for, I think, this one.
With the final state revenue, we will have enough money to afford this in fiscal '24.
So, the money's there and it's consistent with what she showed you last time. We just can't pull the trigger to get this teed up for the supplemental appropriations in the budget public hearing next month unless you are clearly telling us this is what you want to do. In the past, anytime the state has pushed these increases out, you graciously accepted the state money and pushed them on to the county employees. And that also compensated those employees who aren't specifically targeted with these dollars because not all staff, even in a particular department, would get this automatically.
Right. So, a great example of that is the sheriff's office where some of the sheriff's office employees are supported by funding from the compensation board and some of them are not.
Right. So, we have faces before and we have historically been even-handed and tried to feel everybody in. Do you need a motion that we move it forward in that way and a motion to advertise?
We would just, the motion to advertise took care, was taken care of in the consent agenda. What we need here is just a clear authorization to issue the 2% cost of living salary increase to all staff.
Well, that's what I moved.
Second.
Everybody wants to be on board.
Who's a second?
I wrote down Dan.
Dan, I'm up for real. I'm not a...
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Ooh, solid agenda. I just wanted to ask.
Thank you for adding this.
Yep.
I told some people that I can now, at night, see the fires from my house.
That's wonderful.
And I was away for the weekend, and when I left, I looked here out my window, and when I came back, I didn't believe it last night because it'd gone so far north. I didn't, I literally was like, what is that glow?
It's getting higher elevation.
Yeah, and I was like, what is that glow? And then I realized, whoa.
And it's right behind Graves Mountain Lodge, you know, right?
Yeah. So, thank you for adding this.
So, I did want to add a little bit to this. If you recall, the last meeting, Mr. Goff, and I explained to you that our local ordinance isn't entirely helpful because it requires, it allows me, empowers me to put in place a restriction after I receive recommendation from the forester who don't provide recommendations. So, that really carves that out. And the fact that it's written there really precludes me from doing anything else. But state code does enable, through the statewide fire prevention code, based off of the international fire code, does allow localities to regulate open burning. And you don't have to adopt all parts of the fire prevention code. You can only adopt portions. For example, portions relating to open burning, portions related to fireworks, which you did recently. And so, my recommendation here is to, A, take the action that you took last time, enacting the restrictions linked to the wording that's used in the state code relative to open burning within 300 feet of this or that or the other thing. And direct staff to develop a local ordinance formally adapting the open burning provisions of the Virginia statewide fire prevention code to bring that back to the body to review and consider. It can allow you to require a permit for all open burning. That's not really something that works for us. But I think that Art and I can work on it and develop a process that is functional for the typical scenario. And maybe it's a permit-by-rule sort of thing. As long as you're this far away from a forest line and a brush line, then you're allowed to do it and you get your permit automatically without having to ask for it, kind of like the sign ordinance with certain things are just allowed, you're allowed to do. But then also give us the authority to very clearly have Designee be able to put a ban, a burn restriction in place.
So, does that, just thinking about the fact that we're sitting here with that fire burning and then another fire that broke out yesterday afternoon, does, if, on the second part of the proposed action, which would be directing you all to develop this ordinance language, would that allow us to be any more nimble?
Yes.
In a situation like this?
So, what the state code states is in 30711, open burning shall be prohibited when atmospheric conditions or local circumstances make such fires hazardous. And so, you simply, in your, there's other sections of your ordinance, so you would have to identify who's empowered to make that decision.
Okay.
And up in this section, it basically says that if the local body elects to enforce only those provisions of the open burning, it can do so anywhere in the jurisdiction you want to do, the whole county, parts of the county. And it also identifies that any local governing body may establish, let's see, the procedures, and you can identify whoever you want, your local governing body, to do that. It provisions mostly the fire marshal, which we don't have. In Gloucester, it was the county administrator. Here, it could be any position you want. It could be the board chair.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's fortunate that we're meeting today and we can vote on this. But I could see a scenario similar to this one where it doesn't coincide with one of our meetings and we need to make a call quickly.
Yep.
Even on a weekend, so.
So, the same caveat that we discussed last time relative to any restriction in place by the board would stand for this. And it's a strong message to the community on what is appropriate and not appropriate, but enforceability and fines are not going to happen.
I'll put forward a motion that we, we take the recommended action, which is to move to establish that because forest lines, brush lines, fields, Rappahannock County becomes so dry, it creates a serious fire hazard and danger in lives and property, it should be unlawful for any persons to do any open burning near than 300 feet from any such forest lines, brush lines, or fields containing dry grass or other flammable material. I further move that the county administrator be authorized to lift the outdoor open burning restriction when conditions warrant upon consultation with Rappahannock County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association President Richie Burke and Rappahannock County Emergency Management Services Coordinator Darren Stevens. And move that we, the Board of Supervisors direct staff to develop a local ordinance formally adopting the open burning provisions of the Virginia statewide fire prevention code, which is similar to that done for fireworks.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion?
Hopefully, we do this and then we don't have to use it for 20 years.
I know. It's crazy time.
So, I think we get the question, does this include, you know, fire pits and stuff like that that people have?
So, and that's why the specificity of the wording is linked to the state code that's identified, 101158, and it's open burning near than 300 feet to forest lines, brush lines, or fields containing dry grasses or other flammable materials. So, you know, whether it's enclosed or not, or if you're closer than that, then we're asking you not to do it. We're saying it's unlawful.
Okay.
If you do it and we roll up, we're going to say, pretty please. And that's about it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
So, how do we disseminate that quickly?
I'll put it properly, say it again tomorrow.
And then we can put something on our county website?
Website.
Okay.
Now, we have number four, which was the Toll Civil War Monument.
Yeah. You guys start talking, I'll be right back. So, Dr. Toll emailed my office late last week saying, hey, I'd love to talk to you about a green opportunity that we want to pursue for a marker on the court green. So, interesting. I said, Bonnie, can you call Mr. Toll, Dr. Toll? And so, she did. And that precipitated this letter, much more formal, and a lot of information on the type of, the marker that he's looking to do. On the back page are two markers we already have as part of Civil War trails. So, he's asking for, and he says there are 33 Civil War trails, roadside historical markers. Actually, this last year, we shifted one from us to Page County because on the top of the mountain, it's actually theirs, and they're going to start paying for it. So, we have 32. If the board wanted to allow one to be placed on the court grounds, we'd be back to 33 and the budget that we already have. So, he says this one would be focused on the United States colored troops. And you can re-discuss that at least 48 Rappahannock County natives signed up with the USCT. Robert Gould Shaw, the white officer commanded famous 54th Massachusetts colored infantry featured in the movie Glory, spent a month in Rappahannock County in the summer of '62 with the Second Massachusetts Infantry camp near the present-day library. How interesting. So, the Historical Society wishes to apply for a grant with the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation to erect Civil War Trail marker commemorating the US colored troops. And they're asking for it to be placed near where there's an interpretive panel right now facing the monument, I think. I don't know for sure unless...
It's a specific location, although it was in front of Commissioner Redman's office. So, that's the same general location you're talking about.
Where there is one right now that faces the monument, has the picture of the gun rack that used to be on the top that's now in the Historical Society. I presume he would have them signed by side there, but I don't know.
I think we ought to have a little bit of input at the final before it's set because John has been known to be a little bit hard to work with.
So, you know, I think the, I don't think anybody can place anything on the court grounds unless you say it's okay. And I think you could probably condition that with sign off on the location and the message. And with that, would probably give him enough to apply for the grant and then process that he knows he has to feed back to the board, the precise location and precise wording and photos, et cetera, for approval.
I wonder if, you know, a lot of these signs sort of create a trail or a logical progression. And I wonder if, since the encampment was out closer to the library, if a more logical location for it might not be the county administrative buildings. Because I know that there's several markers here and there's one down on Library Road. And I don't think you all have anything with that at the visitor's center.
There are two on Old Mill, down by the river. And there are four or five at my office surrounding the, that white kiosk. But there's great information, we have a wonderful pamphlet at the visitor's center which shows you where all 32, plus the one in Page County that's very close, are located. Gives you a paragraph on each and it gives you a great tour to take yourself around the whole county. Mr. Stephen Fraser, who works for the building and maintenance, toured all of them, took photographs of all of them so we could get condition assessment. And then that's what led to the repairs that you might read about in the newspaper. So, he went to them all, took pictures of them all, and now I have a database of all of them and their condition and photographs. So, this would just be one more, but it certainly needs board approval to be placed in that location.
So, I suppose he's looking for approval to go, some kind of approval that says that he can go ahead and apply for this grant?
I think, you know, he could probably apply for the grant regardless. It's just, can you stick this thing on county property and is the county willing to pay the $200 a year to maintain it?
So, can I make a motion then to authorize, how should I word this? You know, upon, to Mr. Fraser's point, just upon further, upon final review of it, to go ahead and apply for the grant or give him permission to put it here?
Apply for it.
So, authorize, authorize the placement of an additional historical marker on the court green in concept, subject to board approval of location and content?
Yes.
That sounds good, Gary.
You are a craftsman.
Yes. For an engineer, not bad.
It's 430. That was very well worded.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
All those, oops, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I'm chair. Could I interrupt just a second? If we could go back in time just a little bit when we were talking about the parking. The county code for parking violations is 162-4. So, I don't, I mean, that is in the county, but I don't know how it'd affect anything else in the town.
So, we can look, give us a head start. 162-4. That's the same chapter that talks about certain private roads that are able to be enforced, I think.
Right.
All right. Moving into board committee reports.
The building committee did not meet.
All right. Recreational facilities, authority?
We did not meet.
Public safety committee?
Quarterly in December.
Yep. Rules committee?
Did not meet.
Planning commission update?
It's attached to the zoning administrator's report and you'll hear our September work this evening. If you have any questions about the October work, let me know. And it looks like we don't have anything on the agenda for November.
Wow.
For, oh, oh, planning commission.
Planning commission.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Which is January for you, so.
Which I, so I expect we'll cancel that meeting.
That's kind of nice.
Excellent. Fire levy board. You guys didn't meet either.
We did not meet.
Yep. Well, that was quick. All right. Moving into treasures reports.
I don't think there's anything pretty cool.
Staying where we thought it was going to be, which is good.
Yeah.
Cash flow's good, sales tax is good.
Yeah, I see the, Ms. Jewel sends you the sales tax information in advance of you seeing it here, but you can see it has rebounded this month, so that's good relative to last year, so.
All right. Anything you want to highlight?
Doing a lot of different things. Ask me questions anytime you want.
Yep. Just going to review of legal matters?
The only thing I really want to point out here is that the Caprucio, November 13th, is a status hearing. And that's when Mr. Dmitri is going to be called before the judge to show him the action that he has accomplished. He submitted erosion sediment control plan, received comments back, and has received another, has submitted a revised version last week or so, was sent off to Culpeper Sewer and Water Conservation District to review as are all plans. So, he has some serious consequences if he doesn't do everything he was supposed to, including potentially a visit to RSWRJ.
If y'all haven't driven by that house, I would encourage you to do that because it is a real eye-opener.
Yeah, I did.
I haven't yet.
You should.
You know, all the weird stuff in the front and the gate and a lot of that is, you're allowed to do stuff at your house. But he denuded most of his backyard, which is the big, big issue. He's got a giant pit next to the house. Hard to say what that's for, but...
Zombies, it's for zombies.
Could be.
Swimming hole.
Yep.
I mean, that's what it looks like. I don't know. Mote.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry.
Anything on building and zoning?
This is shocking.
No. If you haven't looked at the building permit reports, do look at them. It does include the charts that were asked to be there.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much and it helps me know from year to year what the flow has been. Super helpful.
Beat out identified that we're into smart scale. I've told them.
Could we go back to county administrator activities?
Sure.
I was kind of looking for it and it moved right on by me. Memorandum of the one dated October 16th. October 4th, the county administrator and Chair Donahue met electronically with a representative from the Virginia Institute of Government to discuss their facilitation of a potential calendar year 2024 board retreat. The board hasn't discussed that, to my knowledge, and I don't think we need to go anywhere to have a retreat. We can just have a, some sort of planning meeting or something over, like at the Washington Fire Hall, something where the public's invited. at the Washington Fire Hall or something where the public's invited.
Certainly the public is always invited if three or more board members are pulled together and the early thoughts on this that Ms. Donahue has asked me to try to pursue would be something in the county during a time that people are available.
Something in the county, but where, where were you looking at doing it?
We don't have a spot at the moment, that's one of our problems.
The last time you picked this winery and I don't think we need to do something at a winery.
I completely understand you don't want something at a winery.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of people in the public that don't want something at a winery.
According to social media, I think you're right.
Yeah, so we, you know, the base might be an option, they have a meeting room over on the side.
Oh, that's right.
The fire hall might be an option. It should be something that allows the board to round table in a sort of way, but allow the public to sit on the side and see what's going on.
You want to be comfortable and potential for food is nice to have a restaurant close, attached is a bonus.
I think company.
Still working on it. I'm sorry.
Company one or company three would allow us to put tables in more like a, some sort of square rectangular fashion.
You mentioning one or three, I asked Mr. Stevens to reach out to one and three to check their availability for the clearing based on board's earlier comments. Chief Carter said the date's available, he wasn't sure how good their internet connection was, if we need to facilitate Zoom, I haven't gotten any feedback on one.
Thank you.
All right, matters presented by the board. Mr. Fraser, you want to start?
I'll pass for now.
Great Halloween again in Sperryville, we had a lot of people in the village for that. Of course, we had one really beautiful weekend of leaves, it seemed like, and then Thursday morning, they all blew away, which was kind of a bummer, but still, it's nice to have that one, it seemed like, really peak weekend. Traffic was not seamless at Thornton Gap, which is unfortunate, but it did seem like they were able to get on it and manage it relatively well. I have heard some folks ask about the FedEx box that used to be at Carter's and wondered if there was a way for us to reach out as a county for something at one of the county offices.
I did reach out through their standard form system, I have not heard back from them suggesting that it possibly be co-located with the UPS box.
Yeah.
And I reached out to library director as well, so I don't know.
Good, hopefully.
Short of having a human to talk to, I use their.
It's a maybe.
I use their system to put in a request.
Well, that sounds good.
Well, and you on the UPS front, I called a number, I think down in Fredericksburg, I probably called it 30 times and it rang and rang and rang and then when I got voicemail, I never got a call back and then somehow you pulled off the UPS box despite my best efforts.
That was an online form thing.
So it proves that works.
May just wait.
You just eliminate the human factor and.
Anything else, Ms. Smith?
Not that I can think of.
Mr. Whitson?
Well, just really quickly, I witnessed, unfortunately, I couldn't participate this weekend in the art tour, which is really impressive. It is just unbelievable to see how many residents had their studios open and how many people were here spending money, so that's good.
Great weather.
And it was beautiful.
It was beautiful.
Smoky, but beautiful. So, but anyway, huge accolades to the board members of RAC for what they've now been doing for, I don't know how many years, but it's been a long time.
It's definitely one of the most popular events I think we have.
Yeah, it's really awesome.
Mr. Carney?
I just wanted to thank staff for the battery powered, getting those battery powered speed sensors up, I don't know if you've noticed, but.
I've heard a lot of feedback, positive feedback.
Yeah.
Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah, I thought you might mention it.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's, I just pass it all the time, so thank you. So it, I wanted to ask you, I've heard from a couple people, like I've driven down there occasionally and it doesn't work.
Yeah, so.
And I just, but generally, every time I've gone by, it seems.
The recommendations that, I said in the report, the, kind of the permanent ones with the solar panels, that tractor trailer arrived last week and.
They're right over there.
John Kreiser was very helpful and brought his forklift over and helped us out.
Awesome.
So thank you to John. Got all that, we got some work to do to get it, get them ready to go and so those posts are 12 and 14 feet tall and the recommendations from the manufacturer to have them a little bit higher and also we'll be able to just slightly pivot that post towards the road. The existing signs are, requires to have these temporary battery ones lower to the ground and we have shimmed them out a little bit, but they're not ideal as far as seeing the traffic perfectly. And I think that's just part of what you get when you're using an existing sign, sign and sign post. When we put up the permanent ones, we have full control. They still will go in the same location, but they'll be taller and, you know, they can be set up as they recommend.
So what happens to the temporary ones when we go permanent?
Well, they can go to hotspots like Futon Row or wherever.
Other side of Woodville?
Yeah, well, I mean, the idea is that they are temporary and so I don't want to burn any bridges with V dot. Batteries are supposed to last 10 to 14 days, I have a second set so they can just swap in and out. So I intend to go download the data that we got so far tomorrow, just see you first data download.
Wow, so what is the timeline, do you think, on getting the other ones erected, the permanent ones?
A week or so.
Oh, wow.
Got to get footers in the ground, get them hardened up and then it should go together.
Wow. How fast were you going?
I did, I did have a chance to talk to Deputy Dodson.
23, good for you.
And he said he was parked down by the church like he always is and there weren't any cars speeding and he was like, what's going on?
Wow.
So he has noticed a huge difference, so hopefully that'll continue.
Downside.
Yeah.
Downside is that your locals are going to eventually ignore them and speed and or find folks will only be ticketing locals because people from out of the town will see for the first time, panic and slow down, which is good on a weekend like this.
If you're local.
We had, where we had a gazillion cars.
There were a lot of people and there were a lot of people hitting the brakes.
Mr. Jenkins, when he put them up, said he got a kick out of all the brake lights that he.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
All right, looks like we can go into closed meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.